Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, December 9th, 2024 meeting. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of America and to your republic, where we stand one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Commission Member James Fitzsimmons. Next to Jim is Commission Member Jeff Kohan. And on the outside is Brian Revard, who is an alternate on the commission. To my immediate left is JP Vinoyt, who's the Vice Chair of the Commission. Next to JP is Steve Allison, the Secretary. Next to Steve is David Parent, also an alternate. And at the outside position is Joseph Sanders, also an alternate on the commission. To the table, lower table to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who's our Recording Secretary. Next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pugini, who is our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Seikter, the Chair of this, this commission. Our first order of business is to approve, or to consider and improve the minutes of our November 13th, 2024 meeting. Any Commission Members with any corrections, additions, if I hear none, I'd entertain then a motion to accept the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of our November 13th, 2024 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
And Mr. Vinoyt abstains. This brings us to our first item on the agenda. It's continuation of a public hearing. It's a special permit residential apartment building at 166 Quinipiac Street. If the applicant's representative, please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And Mr. Allison, if you would please read all correspondence. I believe at the last meeting, you had read the legal notice.
Yes, I did at the last meeting. Would you like me to reread it, or?
Oh, no. If you just simply read all of the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a stormwater drainage report revised November 1st, 2024. Correspondence from Giuliano Associates dated November 1st, 2024. That document is entitled "Stormwater Operations and Maintenance." Correspondence from Giuliano Associates to Kevin Pugini Town Planner dated November 6th, 2024. A memorandum from Allison Kapaschinsky to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated November 22nd, 2024. I believe it's, I'm sorry, it's the second page of that. Apologies. Email correspondence from Kevin Pugini to the commission containing an email correspondence from Giuliano Associates. That is dated, the salient part of the email is dated 11/27/2024. Correspondence from Giuliano Associates to Kevin Pugini Town Planner dated November 27th, 2024. Memorandum from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December 2nd, 2024. Correspondence from Giuliano Associates to Kevin Pugini Town Planner dated November 4th, 2024. Email correspondence from Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, to Giuliano Associates dated December 4th, 2024. Email correspondence from Allison Kapaschinsky to Christopher Giuliano dated December 4th, 2024. Email correspondence from Christopher Giuliano to Allison Kapaschinsky dated December 5th, 2024. Site development plan dated September 4th, 2024. Email correspondence from Allison Kapaschinsky to Christopher Giuliano dated December 6th, 2024. Document entitled "Property and Topography Survey: Existing Conditions." Revised date, December 4th, 2024. And then correspondence from Robert Mitchell and Ryan Krieger dated December 9th, 2024. And that is all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. And if the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, Licensed Land Surveyor and Professional Engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. First want to start off by thanking the commission for allowing me to speak last month. As you can see, there was a flurry of correspondence, a flurry of work. And I believe we finally have all the matters that resolve around this project taken care of from a staff level. With that, I'm going to go up and walk the commission through the plans, and then I'll entertain any questions from the commission. All right. So what we have here is a 6,837-square-foot piece of property located on the south side of Quinipiac Street. So orientation for the map purposes, Quinipiac Street and north is located along the right side of the map. East is to the bottom, west to the top, and south is to the left. As I said, it's 6,837 square feet. It's approximately 54 feet wide. It varies from about 110 feet to about 120 feet in depth. The property is extremely flat. There's about one foot of elevation difference from Quinipiac Street to the rear of the property. 65 at Quinipiac, 66 in the back. And it is basically flat from east to west, both sides being at elevation 66. It's currently undeveloped. There's nothing on it. We have commercial and retail to the east, and I believe commercial and retail to the west. So what we're proposing is to construct four residential units, market rate units, on the property. A small parking lot in the front along Quinipiac Street. The property will be, the units will be accessed from the east side. We have a sidewalk coming down the east side, and each unit will have its own entrance. We also have patios along the west side, and the units will have access out on that side as well. We're proposing four parking spaces, although your regulations require six. The regulations do allow us to substitute a bike rack, which we have proposed in this area, right at the front corner, for one of the parking spaces on site. And what we're asking is for the commission to allow us to use off-street parking for the final six spot. We have plenty of room on Quinipiac where it is allowed, and we are not that far from the municipal lot, which is located on the west side of the old train station building. So there is municipal parking nearby. There's plenty of on-street parking. And we have four out of the six spaces, and then the bike rack, which makes five. So with respect to utilities and grading, again, the property is very flat, so there isn't a lot of grading that we had to do for this site. Utilities became the main issue because of how tight the site is. But we do have basically water and sewer in Quinipiac. So we're going to be connecting to the sewer line in this location and running a sewer line up the east side of the property. And each unit will have its own lateral connecting into the sewer. Be taking water from the west side, connecting here in Quinipiac, coming across and terminating right in the middle about Unit 4. And again, each unit will have its own water lateral as well. Electric, be coming to a transformer located here, and then wrapping around the parking lot to the utility meters right here at the northwest part of the building. Now, because of the small site, we didn't have a lot of area for storm drainage, with it being a basically undeveloped lot. And us putting in a parking lot in four units, we had to deal with the impervious surface. So I got a little creative, and I decided to use the area underneath the parking lot for my stormwater detention. Now, this area along Quinipiac is hydrological Group A, so it's very well-drained soils, and that is very fortunate. So what we're doing is we are putting a stone reservoir below the parking lot matrix. So basically, we have about three inches of bituminous pavement, and then we have another 12 inches of gravel and stone that make up our parking lot complex. Below that, we're going to put another 15 inches of stone. So we're going to have a catch basin in the southwest corner of our parking lot, and we're going to be running a curtain drain around the perimeter. That's going to allow the water to come in from that parking lot area, get into the subsurface below the actual parking lot grading and stone. And we'll use that area basically to hold the water. Now, why the 15 inches? The 15 inches is significant because that is the volume I need for the 100-year storm. So when we have these big rain events of 8.36 inches in 24 hours, all of that water can go below the parking lot, be retained there, and then infiltrate into the ground. This is a method that is allowed by Wallingford Engineering. It's actually promoted now by the new 2024 Stormwater Manual. And because I'm below the parking lot matrix, I actually have more stone and more volume available to me should we get the very rare, very odd chance of where we get two large storms in close proximity. I didn't want to use the parking lot stone for storage. I wanted that to be sort of my emergency, emergency storage. And if we did get a lot of volume, we do have some volume in the parking lot where any excess water can be stored before it flows into Quinipiac Avenue. And for sizing purposes, not only do we take in the parking lot impervious surface, we're actually taking in the roof drainage as well. So everything that we're collecting from impervious surface is going into the ground and will be infiltrated. Respect to water quality, we're actually going to be using what's called a catch basin insert. So we're going to put it into the catch basin, and what that's going to do is filter out any of the hydrocarbons before it gets into the ground. That, that insert will have to be cleaned about, I believe it's every quarter or every six months. So it's basically something that can be pulled out, cleaned, and put back, or replaced if necessary. So I believe you have information in your file with respect to the products you plan on using. So other than that, I just want to walk you through the units, just a quick, basic. They are apartments. I know they've been kind of touted as townhouses as well. There's not much difference except for in construction type and permitting purposes. But basically, we have our entryway. We have the kitchen, half-bath off to the right, our dining area, living room, all on the first floor. Stairs up to two bedrooms on the second floor, and stairs down to a full basement below. All right? Now, as far as what they're going to look like aesthetically from the outside, we have our easterly view here, so you can see the four entryways, our northerly view. And what we have done to comply with the regulation is we do have a false door along that northerly front. So it does look like that we have entryway, so it does meet the regulations. Along the west side, we have our access for our patios and our sliding doors, also the emergency access. And then basically, to the south side is probably the least appealing elevation. So that basically sums up what we're planning here as far as the four units, what the units are going to look like, the grading, drainage, utilities. It's, I hate to say it, it's a pretty simple project, given the, the kind of difficulty we had getting here the three months. But we did it finally, and with that, I would, happy to turn it over to any of the commission members if they have questions.
Thank you. Commission Members with questions for the applicant? Yeah?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the parking, basically, you're missing two spots. You're substituting the bike rack for one, fine. If the four units are moved back a little bit, you could get the, you know, sixth parking spot in there. You want to comment on that?
I'm right against the rear setback as it is, so I have no room to push back. We, I, you know, we are right to the setback lines on the south, pretty much setback line on the west. We have a little tiny bit of room on the east, but we've kind of got this situated here to make the utilities work, to get as much parking as we can within the setback. Honestly, I can't see how I would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, ask for reduction in the setback. What's the hardship? There isn't really a hardship in the land. So that's why your regulations do allow the substitution, so that's why we, within the town center, we got the most amount of parking we can on site. You do allow for the bike rack for one. We do have off-street parking, and we do have the missile lot nearby. So in lieu of that, you do have the, you do have the ability to ask for fee in lieu of parking. There is that also, that option, but we'd like to explore the bike rack and on-street parking and go that route if possible.
Um, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the explanation. Just wanted to get that on the record. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan. Other commission members? Mr. Revard?
To see you. Two questions. One, you mentioned these are, you know, market rate housing. Was there any consideration by the applicant to consider one of four units from non-market rate, considering it's in that area of town, or, or not?
I've always, I don't know if it's been considered. Let me, let me start there, only because that's really not my purview as far as part of the development. I'm, I'm only an engineer, as I like to say.
The only reason I ask is, you know, it feels like we have several applications that come in zoned areas of town where we may say, hey, that's not optimal, right? This is in an area of town where, you know, it may be, right? And so somehow, we need to, you know, consider to incentivize this type of development. I understand you probably can't in this case comment on that, but this is possibly an ideal spot if we can get one of four of these converted into non-market rate. So maybe it's something for us all to consider, you know, I, which on the spot, but understanding of the engineer. But I think, you know, those are the things we want applicants in this area of town to consider. And then the, you know, the second question I have, during the construction phase, you know, how long will it take to kind of go do this? And what provisions are you guys considering to try to, you're, you're in tight quarters with several people and residents around this spot. What are you guys doing to try to not impact business and residents, you know, local to that area as, as this gets built?
With respect to that, it is a tight site, so we basically have to build from the back and come forward. There's no other way to do it. One of the comments from the town engineer was with respect to our stockpile areas. We originally were going to be using the area up front. She's concerned with infiltration rates and compacting soil. So we will be, you know, stockpiling in the back as much. But it's going to be, it's not going to be unique. I mean, we, there are places that are a lot more crowded than this, New Haven, Bridgeport, Hartford, where we do things like this all the time. A little bit different from Wallingford, of course. We don't usually get these infill lots in downtown too much. But we will be having to start from the back, come forward, and you won't have everyone on site at once because there just won't be enough room. So it's going to, logistically, whoever ends up building this will have to be on top of their game to basically make sure that they don't impact neighbors, Quinipiac Street, traffic flows, all of that. So luckily, that's not my wheelhouse and not my problem to deal with. But it is a good question, and I'll make sure that that concern does get relayed on. You're welcome.
Thank you. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions, quick. So if you could go back to your picture of what you, what it's going to look like? I was looking, I thought I had it in my plans. I don't. Thank you.
Sure.
If I'm driving down Quimpiac Street, where's my view?
I'm going to see this.
And did I hear you say a false front door?
Yes.
All right. What's above the door?
That is, that's a bay window. That is not false at all. If, I'll just flip back. So that unit is Unit 1, and they do have an actual bay window above. But it is a false door below to give it look of a front door facing the street, because that is one of the requirements.
Well, yeah, and I, through you, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask the Town Planner. Does that conform with our requirement that the front of the building face the main street versus the side? I mean, I, I see the, the pictures. Does it comply with the reg?
I think it does technically because it's a front door facing the building, even though there's four main entrances technically. So I don't know how you would have physically done all four main entrances on the front. But I think it's kind of up to, to you whether or not you think that would comply, or?
Well, I mean, I, I bring your attention, if you think of the Wells Fargo on Route 5, across from CVS.
Yeah.
You can't walk in the front door, but it looks like the front of the building, but the parking entrance is in the rear. But appearance purposes, it's the front, right? That front door is not going anywhere, right? You said it's a false front door.
That's correct.
So it's, which is a big difference than the false front windows at Wells Fargo that are false, that you don't, you can't see in the building. But I, I mean, our reg, our reg states the building should be oriented to the front of the road. This is not. And I apologize, I don't have my zoning book with me. That's why I'm deferring to the Town Planner for interpretation of it.
Yeah, I was told by the architect it would be a working door, so it's kind of a, now it's a false door, so.
I, I call it
My ears perked up when I heard false front door.
Well, I'm calling a
I get false windows because I'm thinking of Wells Fargo.
Yeah, well
Because he was made, he was made aware early in the process that we had the reg, so I think.
The reason why I'm saying false is located here. This is the kitchen for this unit. So my understanding from talking with the architect and his conversations with Kevin that this was satisfactory. As you're probably well aware, we just got done doing M&amp;T. The front of that building, Route 5, has, I believe, a false front door facing Route 5. The main entrance is to the north, so there's not much difference. And again, what's really the front? I know this is, this is a regulation that is really haunted. This commission tried to do this. But we just have those properties and those buildings that it's almost, it's not impossible. But it's very difficult to comply with that regulation, and not every property can fit that particular mold.
And, and I, I appreciate that, and, you know, and I, I would be very clear. I think there's a good number of sideways buildings in town, which is why we put the regulation in place after the Hartford Healthcare Office, Office Building went up where the old Everybody's Metro Tool. And we said, you know what? The, the front door should face the road, right? I mean, you know, Walmart, the front row, the front is the, the side, and both Main Street and Route 5, you see the sides of the building. So here's another example. We'll see the side of the building. So I'll, I'll ask it based upon your response. Can the front door be functioning for one unit? So it's a working front door, even though it's only to one unit?
I think we, I think it is possible. Moving it from this location down, I think it could be done. And I think I heard the chairman talk about some windows as well. I, I, I think we can, we could likely make it happen and spruce it up. I think we can make that happen for you.
I, I would tell you, I mean, you know, I certainly believe has the property that's left in town that's not developed, and this is not developed, the opportunity should always be to present the front of the building to the front of the street. So I guess, and because it's a special permit, I would request that it be changed, that you have a working door facing the main road, which, you know, with a window or two for the chairman, it, then it would have the appearance of a front of the building versus the side.
Okay. As you're well aware, these are not final architectural plans. They're for approval. Taking that in mind, there is very easy opportunity for the architect to make that before they go get a building permit. If that's a condition of approval, again, that doesn't fall on my shoulders. I will agree to that if we can move this along and if that'll satisfy your concerns.
To use the term moving on, I would tell you I am in support of this request for a special permit. I am in support of your request for parking payment in lieu of parking spaces. I have been on the record, sorry, my friend, I've been on the record for years. In order to develop downtown, we've got to reduce our parking requirements, so. So I've been in an argument with the chairman, you know, saying we should have zero parking requirements if we're getting more half units. So I'm in favor of your payment of $2,000 per spot towards the town prior to the issuance of a permit.
Okay. Let me just clarify. I didn't necessarily offer that. I commented on that, that it is in the commission. But again, this commission can make that part of the requirement. We obviously went the other route to put in the bike rack and to use off-street parking, but it is, again, this commission's purview. I just, the way you had stated it, I didn't offer it, but if you require it, that's a condition.
I mean, part of it too is it's a discussion point. So I guess I'm putting, I'm putting on the record, I'm just one person up here, I'm in favor of the payment in lieu of parking. You know, we always need, you know, I always said downtown parking problem is a nice problem to have. So, you know, so I'm in favor of your request. The commission could discuss that amount later. And then the other, the only last question, I'm sorry, I'm taking too much time, snow It's a tight, tight site, much like my house, and I'm worried about the snow, where to put the snow, because I don't see numbered parking spots. I see the handicap spot clearly, but I was looking like to count what you do have, and, you know, we don't want to create a problem.
With only four spots, I really didn't feel I had to number them, and I apologize, but we do have one, two, three, and four.
Okay, so the handicap, then there's three, the three next.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the reason why the handicap was put on this side was to give a little extra room for backing out and pulling out. Snow storage is gonna be piled to the west side, obviously with the sidewalk here, everything from the sidewalk's gonna end up at the back, and parking lot's gonna have to be on the west side. It is tight. There's, there's no, I can't describe it any other way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments about housing downtown and the challenges of building back out. I wonder, though, are we trying to put more places in that space than we have? Every time I have an opportunity to drive up that way, I do. In fact, I stopped by, drove by again tonight on my way up on a dark and wet night, I don't know how in good conscience we outsource parking for this property to Quinipiac Street. I think about number of bedrooms, and so unless we, I shouldn't say that, with two bedrooms, it's very likely to have two vehicles per unit, very likely. And that brings us up to eight vehicles. Plus, we, in addition to snow removal, which happens occasionally, we've got regular, ongoing trash pickup throughout the year, landscaping access during the year. I didn't see some of the comments about emergency vehicle access, at least notes, I didn't, I can't tell if they're completely resolved, but I think about my neighborhood, my, my dogs have this uncanny awareness of any delivery guy in the region. Like today, I looked outside, my dog is barking at a delivery guy in the street behind me, so I'm like, are you kidding me? We have delivery people in our neighborhood all the time, several times a day. So, you know, I kind of wonder if we're trying to put more units in that space than we really should. And I, I ask, I just am concerned that we may be, I don't know that Quinipiac Street has the overflow. I don't, I'm concerned about the parking. I don't know that there's the answer to that, because I understand the developer probably doesn't want to reduce the number of units, but I don't think we've, I think we're sacrificing parking, and I think that that outsources a problem somewhere else. And importantly, a problem for the potential residents there. What resident is gonna want to say, yeah, I'll go use municipal parking? So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pajetti, comments that you may have on the application?
No, I'd just say specifically the town center is designed to have apartments with centralized parking, and it's more of a, I would agree with you if it was in a different part of town, but the town center was specifically designed for lower parking requirements, so you can fit apartments on small sites and go up high, so you're never gonna be able to fit all of the parking on a site in the town center necessarily. So I would agree with you in some other place, but I think in this situation, it would warrant it. Brothers Lot is probably a small walk from this site, so. Other than that, no, I don't have any further comments. I would say, the way I read the parking requirement is that they would either have to pay the fee or provide the space. It does kind of have vague language at number four in considering any applications for a special permit. The commission, the sufficiency, and, let's see, to support additional parking associated, parking within the vicinity of the subject property. All it really says is the commission, as they deem appropriate, doesn't really say you can technically replace it. So that's the way I read it, but I guess it's if you agree with that or not. I didn't write these regs, so. That's the extent of my comments.
That's it? I guess from my viewpoint, I certainly agree with Ms. Fitzsimmons. I think the front of the building should look like the front of the building. So you've indicated that there's a possibility, not the possibility, but in fact, you can, you know, center the door a little bit. You could put certainly two, at least two more windows on the, on the front of the building, you know, for the first story and the second story. I think that'd fit, and it would make it look much more like a front of the building than, than what you've initially proposed. You know, as far as the parking, I mean, I get that that's, you know, could create an issue, especially if there's two people living in each of those units, but at the end of the day, that's someone that they're going to rent, they're going to know that that's an issue, I would certainly think. And it's their option if, you know, they wanted to take the risk of having one of those parking spaces, and who knows, maybe those parking spaces could be, you know, could be assigned to a unit. And then it's, it's their option of, I have to park in the, you know, in the old brothers' lot, or I perhaps have to park on the street, but that's, you know, that's an option in a discussion for someone who's, you know, renting those apartments. And I assume at least one of the apartments you're gonna rent to someone who only rides a bicycle.
We are trying to push that.
I get it. With that, this is a, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on the application? If they are, please raise your hand, come forward with your comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the applicant if you'd like to make any final comments. If not, I'll look for some final discussion from commission members.
I'm all set on my end. Again, I just want to thank the commission for their time.
As far as the commission members go, you know, there was a discussion with Mr. Fitzsimmons as far as looking for a fee in lieu of the parking spaces, so I guess I'd open that up to commission members as far, as far as how they feel about that.
Is $2,000 a spot appropriate?
Sure. I would think so.
I would propose that. It is prior to the issuance of building permit.
Any other discussion from commission members? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 409-24.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting by Mr. Cohen.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application 409-24, special permit, 166 Quinipiac Street, special permit and site plan approval request for Gallagher to construct a four-unit multifamily residential development with associated parking at 166 Quinipiac Street on plans entitled Site Layout Plan, Land of Ross Gallagher, 166 Quinipiac Street, dated September 4th, 2024, and revised to December 4th, 2024. Subject to, one, all comments from the senior engineer Scott Shipman, Water and Store Division; two, all comments from town engineer Allison Kaputinsky; three, all comments from Kevin Pajini, town planner; four, all comments from the fire marshal's office; five, final plans to mark extent of sidewalk replacement with a note to replace sidewalk to the nearest panel; six, excavation permit is required from the Department of Engineering for any work within the right-of-way; seven, payment in lieu of parking space fee to be posted prior to building permit signed off in the amount of $2,000 per space; eight, operating and maintenance plan or notice of said plan to be filed on Wallingford Land Records; nine, erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $6,500; ten, six copies of final plans forwarded to the planning and zoning office; and eleven, a, create a working door facing the main road with addition of windows.
Do we, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting by, by Mr. Cohen, please, first.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, it brings us to our next item on the agenda, it's continuation of a public hearing for zoning text amendment, WI Zone Data Center slash Charter Development LLC. And while the applicant's getting prepared to continue the presentation, Mr. Allison, if you would please note all additional correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a document entitled Becoming Competitive IT Infrastructure from Fred Karstensen, dated July 17th, 2024. Email correspondence to Donald Gershman from Dimitrios Giannakis, dated September 3rd, 2024. Email correspondence from Dwight Miriam to Donald Gershman, dated 11/5/2024. Correspondence from Adelaide Kopfer to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November 12th, 2024, with an updated denotation, 11/13/2024. We have a set of PowerPoint slides, the revised zoning text amendment to permit limited data center use in the Watershed Interchange WI District with a special permit, dated We have a document entitled Testimony of Renee H. Miller, dated Tuesday, November 12th, Email correspondence from WCI Inc. to Kevin Pajini, dated 11/13/2024. Memorandum from Kevin Pajini, town planner, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November 13th, 2024. A document also entitled Testimony of Renee H. Miller, dated Tuesday, November 12th, Maybe the same duplicate, apologies for the record. Email correspondence from Tarn Granucci to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated November 10th, 2024. Email correspondence from Gregory Madar to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated November 11th, 2024. Email correspondence from Frank Mareska to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated November 11th, 2024. Email correspondence from Joseph Mira to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated November Correspondence from Chris Ulbrich to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November 11th, 2024. Email correspondence from Marshall Rubin to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/12/2024. Email correspondence from Lars Adine to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/12/2024. Email correspondence from Ryan Krieger to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/12/2024. Email correspondence from Robert Mitchell to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/12/2024. Email correspondence from Ron Hanson to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/12/2024. Email correspondence from Steve Knight to Kevin Pajini, town planner, dated 11/13/2024. Email correspondence from Krista Cia, apologies if I got that mispronounced, dated 11/13/2024. Correspondence from Adelaide Kopfer to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November Correspondence, I apologize, it's cut off on the bottom of the copy, I can't make out the signature. Starts with Dear Planning and Zoting Regarding Data Center, and it's dated November 25th, Document entitled Revised Text Amendments Draft 11/25/24. Another document entitled Revised Text Amendments Draft 11/25/24, with red line corrections. Correspondence from Jim Wolf to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November 24th, Document entitled Revised Text Amendments, dated December 2nd, 2025. It's a little early. Correspondence from Jack Aragoni to Kevin Pajini and the Planning and Zoning Commission, Email correspondence from Tony Hayes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated December Correspondence from Tim Ryan to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated December 6th, And correspondence from Joan Munger to Planning and Zoning Commission, dated December 9th, 2024. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. If the members, rather, as the applicant, please introduce themselves and continue the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, I'm Donald Gershman. I'm here with my partner on my right, Eric Brown, on behalf of Charter Development Group LLC. Our counsel, Dwight Miriam, is here to my left, and our community outreach consultant, Chuck Corsi, is seated behind me this evening. As you know, we are here for the second continuation of the public hearing to consider our proposal for limited data center development as a permitted use, but subject to a special permit in the Watershed Interchange District. We have substantially revised and expanded our proposed text amendment to incorporate comments and subject, and suggestions from the commission as well as from the members of the public. We hope that we've struck the right balance tonight. I'd like to take five or 10 minutes to describe the changes made. We have copies of the new version of the text amendment for the commission, you should have them, I believe, in your packets. And for interested members of the public, if you, anybody who wants them behind me, if you raise your hand, we'll give you a copy. The first major change is a substantially expanded discussion of the architectural requirements of a data center building, specifically for the benefit of nearby residents. The text amendment now requires that we include architectural details, features, and articulation to minimize the visual impact of a larger structure, such as periodic changes in building materials, inclusion of features such as cornices between stories, and a forward and backward movement of the exterior surface at least every 75 feet. Flat roofs will be required to be scree... Flat roofs will be required to be screened using setback parapets or other features to hide all rooftop equipment. Entrances will be limited to one every 50 feet, and we've reduced the maximum building height from 80 feet previously to 60 feet now. We've provided for extensive treatment of potential noise from the data center with a focus on low-frequency noise. We are required now to obtain design analysis and specifications from a certified acoustic engineer to minimize sound transmission with specific recommendations on low-frequency sound. We will be obligated to continuously monitor sound transmission and, in accordance with a plan approved by this commission, and to promptly report any exceedances. We will be obligated to test backup generators only on days and at times approved by this With regard to environmental protection generally and the watershed specifically, we are restricted from using any building cooling system that employs the one-time use of water. We are obligated to comply with strict requirements to prevent any spill of onsite stored fuel and to have a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan for emergency response. We agree to use high-quality site planning and landscape design by a professional landscape architect with a focus on maintaining existing trees, minimizing the area of disturbance, and using berms or other design features to reduce the visibility of the building from the street. We have some additional language we'd like to suggest on that in a moment. We have provided for a pre-application scoping meeting between the applicant and town staff to determine the appropriate information to be submitted with the special permit application, and have provided for the commission to engage consultants to review our application at our expense if necessary for the commission to make a reasonable decision about the application. Further, we have agreed that this review shall not be limited to the application as submitted but may include independent investigations by the consultants if they determine that additional information is needed to make an informed assessment of the application. We believe that these changes directly address the principal areas of concern that have been identified. There's one item raised at the last meeting that we did not incorporate that I would like to discuss. The text amendment limits the aggregate size of all data center buildings in the zone to 350,000 square feet. It was suggested that we include a limit on the size of each individual building as well. We did not do this for three reasons. First, our discussions with people in the data center industry have made it clear that the demand today is for midsize and large facilities. Second, there are significant economies of scale, both in construction and in operation, for a single building versus multiple smaller buildings. And third, and perhaps of most concern to this commission, the development of a single building will result in significantly less site disturbance, tree removal, roadways, parking areas, and the like than would be the case with multiple buildings. For these reasons, we have not included a limit on the size of the data center buildings. Of course, this commission will review the proposed development in its entirety as part of the special permit review. With regard to landscape design, in paragraph G, we'd like to add a sentence to the end of that paragraph as follows. "The landscape plan shall incorporate revisions and changes provided by the commission during the special permit process." With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commission members with questions for the applicant.
To my right, anybody? We'll start at the end.
Start at the end, I guess everyone's probably gonna have comments or questions. First of all, thank you for the focus on the low-frequency sound. Two questions on that, you know, how will it be measured and will you be proposing adjustments to our noise ordinance, you know, at the time of potential site plan, or should we incorporate that here so that we can actually measure something versus a standard? I'm not sure if that exists or if you explored that specifically. And what are the remedies associated with all of these things? If, I think, speaking to many, many people about this issue, there's a general feeling that once you've opened the box and something is out there and built, if something occurs, what is the mitigating action and remedy to correct it or adjust it? You know, with all of these changes, it's clear to me that there's a sincere interest to, you know, mitigate and address public comments, because I went through the list personally prior to this meeting relative to everyone submitted documentation in the comments last time, and I think, I personally think you tried to go kind of every issue to the point where you even addressed the chairman's comment on, you know, square footage of different buildings not being included. So, you know, thank you for the open transparency on that, but I personally as well have a concern. Once, say we start hearing this hum, what are the mitigations to fix it?
Great questions, thank you. We are told that low-frequency hum can be measured just like any other sound. It's harder for us to perceive as people, but equipment can perceive it. So we will be designing a system that will be calculated and determined by people that understand this not to have low-frequency hum disturb the neighbors. That will, the credentials of the expert you will approve, the plan you will approve, you can have your own consultants review them, et cetera, at our expense. So we are confident that we can provide you and the town with a plan that works. Now, what happens if it doesn't, right? With all of these issues, if there is low-frequency sound, if there is somehow noise from air conditioning equipment that we didn't contemplate, or whatever, you add more engineering, you add more baffling, you add more vibration, absorption things, the answer is not simply too bad it's open. You're correct, it's not gonna shut the, you're not gonna shut the building down, but what you're gonna do is you're gonna spend more money and fix the problem. And if you have to do that iteratively, you'll do it iteratively, but the problem will be fixed.
Thank you. Other commission members. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, let's continue on the low-frequency topic because since this application started, I wanted to have a metric for what the low-frequency specifications are, and, you know, I have not seen that. I don't know how we can allow this. Again, I think my previous comments about having a workshop to go over all these very interesting and complex issues would have been the first step in going through this. So I really, and I really wanted to see some metrics on what the low-frequency is, and you mentioned you had some acoustical engineers, but I still haven't seen any metrics on that. So how can you, you know, mitigate something where you don't know what it is? So that's, you know, still a stumbling block for me. We still have questions about electricity, and it looks like the general manager of the electric division is here?
I'm being told he is. He is in the house. We'll give him an opportunity to...
So, you know, I personally have a lot of concerns about, you know, power consumption, how it's gonna be handled by the electric division. So again, I think a workshop to discuss this would have been, you know, the prudent first step in putting together this text amendment. And, you know, I'm basically repeating myself from the last two meetings about a lot of things that have not been satisfied in my mind. The nature of the data center, you know, there's several different types that, you know, can be constructed. What are the, you know, qualifications for each of the different types of data centers that could be built here? You know, I think those need to be defined. You talked about, you know, the size of the building, and, you know, if this is successful, you know, there has to be room for expansion adjacent to the existing building. There's, you know, need for a future-proof design. I talked about different power alternatives, you know. At some point, instead of electricity, it could be purely battery, it could be solar, it could be wind on this site. You know, that is not addressed in these text amendments. We still didn't talk about the e-waste, you know, what's gonna happen with that. I don't know if you've ever seen any equipment come in, but there's a lot of waste around, you know, the equipment that comes into a data center. There is not, you did briefly touch on it, but I wanted to see some type of wildlife strategy built into the regulations. You know, you mentioned about looking at the wildlife in there, but I really don't see any mitigation wildlife quarters built into the text regulations, which I would like The town planner, in his comments, suggested some type of geographical restriction for sound mitigation. I think that something in the text amendment would be a thing that we needed to have in the text regulations as well, and I don't see that. So, you know, I still think they need a lot of work. I still, you know, when we can talk to the electric division manager, that would be great. I still go back to the point, a lot of people made comments about the financial benefits of this. I'm still stuck on why no other towns in Connecticut have jumped on this. That is, you know, kind of a flag to look at, you know, what do they know that, you know, we may not know. So I still have a lot of concerns with the items brought up in the text. I still think there needs to be a lot of work, a lot more discussion. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the revisions to your text amendment, and I was noting, as I was pulling things together for the meeting, your one-page amendment is now two and a half pages, because you've added a lot more detail, and I appreciate you walking through. One of the areas you added, I want to ask about because it's an area that makes me uneasy, and it is condition B7H, which is all new text, because the prior version just talked about a independent consultant or independent review, and this section 7H, I don't know, and I'm not the town staff, I'm the commissioner, I don't know if the town can do that. And I was gonna ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner, have you seen the request regarding the funds and interest-bearing account in the 45 days after review we return the funds? Because the peer review, which is my only comparison in our current regs, doesn't have this level of detail. And I have not, I don't wanna speak for the town, but I don't know if we could do this. So mechanically, I wanna ask the town planner, is this something that you've looked at and that, does the town infrastructure and finance department allow us to accept funds, put in a separate interest-bearing account, and return it 45 days after the review? The only comparison I could think of is how we have done it in the past regarding traffic study and peer review.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the interest being accrued, but we definitely have the ability to hold it in an account for 45 days, so.
Okay.
I did not look into that specifically, but I can if it's something that is gonna be held up or if they wanna change it or, yeah, wasn't. We can look into that, if that's something that's gonna hold it up or have it, just maybe take it out. Not sure about the interest part of it, so.
I guess is that the applicant, is that an issue for you gentlemen?
We'd be happy to remove the language about interest-bearing.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about the, thank you, thank you. I'm not worried about the interest, it's the level of detail you got into, I think, is, I don't know if we're there.
We got that from another section.
This is Dwight Miriam speaking. I lifted a 45-day provision from another part of your regulations, I don't have that section.
R regs.
Your regs. Your regs is in another part, so I thought that was standard operating procedure, and it is typical of other places. The one refinement in here, and why this section's a little more elaborate than what you've seen before, we heard the commission say, peer review's not good enough for us. We don't wanna be stuck with your application. So my clients and I talked about, how can we make that better for the commission and still work for us? And so we opened it up by saying, if your consultant thinks there's not enough evidence in the record for them to make a reasoned decision, then they have the ability to go beyond what you characterize as a peer review, and we have the ability to fix it if we've given you not enough good information for you to decide on. So it's better than what you've had before and more expansive.
Right. And again, I know none of you gentlemen live in town, am I correct?
Correct.
In Wallingford, we still write checks to pay the electric bill, so we are not there where other towns might be. That's why I was questioning the finances, so to speak. So I think part of it is, I am, I've been up here a few years, I'm generally in support of a peer review concept where the applicant would submit to the town at their expense funds for us to hire someone to do it. In this particular space, because we're still at the zoning text amendment discussion, we're not even at the, you know, and I think, I just don't want us to get hung up and handcuffed in the mechanics of, because you put such specificity in... because you put such specificity in your amendment, and I don't know how we would comply, so to speak. So the peer review piece to me would be whether it's independent.
I found it. It's in the incentive housing zone. So it's never been used because we've never had an incentive housing zone application, so that's why. But it is in there. So I'm guessing that we have the ability.
Okay, all right. If that's the case, then first off, thank you, then that's the first clarification. And then the second would be, you know, it says independent professional review of a data center application. My question in deference to Commissioner Cohen would be, are we hiring a noise consultant? You know, who's going to consult, who's going to consult on your application before it's done, right?
I think what this is saying is, we're going to submit an application, and you can hire consultants with different areas of expertise for areas that you feel you want more information on.
Yeah, I just, I think you, in that particular space where I envisioned it, and I have no experience to compare other than to a peer review on a traffic study, which is not getting our own traffic study, it's someone looking at your report saying, yep, they did it the way I would do the same report. I'm kind of unsure of how we do this for noise. But I know in the past, we have had other applications that have had noise concerns and abatement issues that we have discussed. So that's the only thing on the amendment that concerns me, the additional language regarding to the specificity that you proposed. You know, I think, I would agree with Commissioner Cohen on one or two points. And I know, you know, at the public meeting last month, and he said it again tonight, you know, he would have preferred we discussed this in a workshop. And as I know, and since you've made the application, we're under a time constraint to hold a hearing, discuss it, and act on it. So as much as I like a workshop too, I get it. You're making the request, it's your language, you're taking our input, you're revising it. And if I recall from the last meeting, this is the third meeting we're having on this particular topic. So conceptually, I get where we're going. But we're not, you know, and we're not getting into any specifics of any site because it is the entire zone, and that's, you know, and I believe, as we sit up here, we are one of the few, we're one of the few towns where we do both planning and zoning. So this is the planning portion of our job. So conceptually, for this zone, I see where you're going. I'm generally in support of this amendment because of the issues that have outlined. That does, that no way says that, you know, what will happen if and when an application comes in. But I think you have heard us and my colleagues to the right, I mean, and prior meetings, it appears to me the noise is the issue. And anytime we have residential use next to any noise generating activity, you know. But I would note, you know, and we've received a lot of written comments on this, there are other, there are other uses already permitted in the WI that will have, that will generate more noise. But it's the, if I heard correctly from the others and the information presented, it's the constant or steady hum. So I do think that still is the issue. But I, you know, I think the requirement, excuse me, the regulation or the text amendment, you know, what the proposal is, I think it's in line with our zoning regulations. It's in line with our plan of development, which we're required by the state to adopt every 10 years. It's in line with the long-term goals for town of Wallingford and, you know, the economic development. And I think, you know, I don't live out there, right? So I said the last meeting, I get the noise thing, you know. I talked about last meeting, the manhole in front of my house, which has since been fixed by the town. So I get, you know, but I know noise generation is an issue. It'll have to be addressed if this is approved during the hearing process. And I think that's the largest, you know, hurdle. But I think when I look at other uses in town, I look at other development in the area. You know, in that area right now, what we allow, what we have up there, you know, we have a hotel, we have this. You know, one of the uses that's allowed up there is a daycare center. I know because I have a school behind my house. I know when the kids are in recess. I know when the kids are at lunch. It's noise. I love kids. I have kids, but, but I, you know, part of it is, it's just, it's a change. So I'm very aware of, you know, what happens when prior undeveloped land becomes developed. And anytime it's a budding residential. So I think you've also addressed the distance from a residential zone and separately, in the same sentence, the distance from a residential house for use. So I appreciate that because I do, we discussed it the last time this commission was discussing data centers. But I, I just want to be on record, it's the peer review piece that I'm most troubled about with the revisions to your amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members. Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I had a lot of comments the past two meetings, and you guys did a wonderful job of incorporating a lot of the comments that I put here. But I did want to go on record of saying a couple of things. We've heard from other commission members that have talked about workshops and doing it in this fashion. I don't think that as a commission, we have the ability to say, well, you should have gone through this process. This is your application. You brought it in this fashion. It's for us to deal with it the way you decided to bring it. So I'm going to be on record saying that I don't think that that is a fair comment to you. I will say that you guys have gone and really spent a lot of time on this. I appreciate Commissioner Fitzsimmons' comment about the difference between our role as a planning commission and our role as a zoning commission. And with that, I did have one question on subsection 7C, where it talks about the water cooling, one-time water use. And because this is a planning type of regulation, my question is, by omitting a specific type of cooling, is that a type of cooling that is generally used? Or is it almost never used because one-time use of water is not efficient? In other words, are we shutting the door to potential other applications in other areas down the road in the zone? I don't know enough about the cooling, and I think as a planning part, I don't know that we want to cripple what other applications and what other applicants may do and what you folks might do down the road. At a actual special permit hearing, we may want to say, hey, we want air cooling. Hey, we want no one-time use. I just don't know that that's something that we don't want in this district completely. So I just was hoping you could give me a little bit of insight, maybe teach me something.
That comment, that requirement is in there because of prior comments, obviously, about concern about preserving the watershed and preserving the water, the town's drinking water. So we wanted to make it clear that in a development that we would do, we have no intention of using water other than for normal domestic, you know, uses, kitchens, bathrooms, things like that, and cleaning. Were we sitting next to the Connecticut River? Conceivably, you might say, we're going to have an intake, and we're going to take some water and run it through a cooling system and have an outflow, and the difference would be de minimis to the river or to anything, and that would be a source of cooling. We're not, and we want to be sensitive to the specifics of the watershed zone. So we basically said we will constrain ourselves not to use that kind of a system, and we will use electric cooling, similar to what all of us have in our homes.
I mean, it's your text amendment, and if you think that it's okay in this fashion, you know, I'm fine with that. I don't want to end up in a situation where we create a text amendment that makes it impossible for the text to ever be used. Otherwise, we're wasting everybody's time. Other than that, I did want to comment on 7H, which is the review process. I like the language. I like the way it's written. I think it gives the commission a lot of flexibility. I do have some reservations, like Commissioner Fitzsimmons mentioned, about is it functional? But that being said, I think that it provides a lot of oversight for this commission. It provides us the ability to get a significant amount of data about any special permit that's applied for under these regs. So if an applicant finds that it's not going to work, or if the town finds that it's not going to work, then we may have to look at that down the road. But for right now, I think that it gives us a significant amount of oversight, and it gives me a lot of comfort to provide the public the answers to a lot of their concerns. So I'm okay with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Yes, Mr. Perrin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in support of Commissioner Cohen's request for a special workshop on somewhat different grounds. Just very immediately before this meeting, I received this adoption of amendment of zoning regulations, the county of Fairfax, Fairfax, Virginia. I don't think you had this in your packet. And it, and a couple of features is that this is pretty contemporaneous. It was signed on September 11th, 2024 at 12:01 a.m., which kind of indicates a long discussion. And it has some items in it that I think we have to look at. And I know that you've done a lot of work. You've answered every question. You've gone and, but I think that because this is such an evolving process with data centers, that we would just be far better served if we had a workshop and we could look at this, and it's shorter than yours, and see if there's further changes or changes to be made, or things that we can even take out of yours. And so again, I just am in support of Mr. Cohen's, Commissioner Cohen's idea of having a workshop so that we can just kind of work these things out by ourselves and have much more confidence when you come before us to either say yes or no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Anyone else? Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the applicant's consideration of many of the things we put forward. I do want to loop back to the October, the initial meeting. And one of the questions that one of the commissioners asked was, why was there a 350,000-square-foot limitation in the proposed regs? You know, in thinking more about that, I don't know that, and at the time, I didn't actually, it wasn't clear to me that that was a, that that was a limitation on the total amount of allowed data center use within the WI zone. I thought that that was a single building. And the answer was that it fit your business plan. That was the, the answer given was that it fit your business plan as to why that was in there. And just doing, running some quick numbers, that we asked about the footprint. And I realized that there's a difference between planning and zoning, as others have mentioned. At 420 feet length, 120 feet width, and now 60 feet high, we're at nearly 300,000 square feet right there. So that puts us in terms of regulation approval, if we're being asked to do that, to become entangled in picking winners and creating barriers to entry for others. And that concerns me. I understand the, and appreciate your mention about why you didn't want to put limits on specific buildings. But I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that we take one applicant's suggestion and because of a potential proposed building that we're not here to consider today. It puts us, it puts this in a position of saying that without coming back to the reg, we can't really consider whether there's additional facilities that should be used in the WI zone. And in addition to that, there's another, there's another item on the agenda that talks about definitions. And one of the things brought up in October was that, was a question about whether the inclusion of the square foot area included the primary work building as well as all-out zones. The definitions of buildings, I think it needs to be inclusive. If we're going to have restrictions, whether it's at an individual level or at a maximum permitted in the entire zone, I do think that the term "building" needs to apply universally with the regulations. And anything that qualifies as a building counts toward that square foot limitation. So just to propose both of, I think that we need to give more thought to that. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other commission members? From my standpoint, first, I guess I would kind of concur with Mr. Allison as far as, you know, the discussion as far as a workshop. Should this be a workshop? Should we have a workshop? How should this be handled? Again, I think as Mr. Allison indicated, it's the applicant who's come forward with an application. We have the responsibility to, you know, to look at the application that's been presented to us. So I think that that's, this is where we find ourselves. I do appreciate that you've took to heart my comments, you know, about the, you know, about the building and as far as the design of the building, what the look should be. As far as with the, you know, with the landscaping plan, I suspect what you added today or proposed tonight, possibly Mr. Pugini indicated to you, at least what my comments were, that there should be some additional language in that to give us more flexibility with that. You know, I, like everyone, I'm concerned about noise, low-frequency noise, all of that. I think we all, we all get that. As I mentioned at the last meeting, again, it was just my observation, and I'm sure other people may have a totally different observation. But I, you know, I went to both the Norwalk facility as well as the Trumbull facility, drove around, walked around, dragged my wife around there a couple times. She has better hearing than I do. And quite frankly, I didn't observe any, any noise, any low frequency. Doesn't mean that someone else going out there, you know, may not, may not be impacted. When I look at what you're proposing here, again, is other commission members, you know, in H certainly gives the, you know, the commission a great deal of latitude as far as, you know, what they are looking for, what they would require. You know, when I look also at, you know, section, it's section F, where it says, you know, the data center operation continually monitors sound emission in accordance with a plan approved by the commission. So again, you propose a plan. I know there's been some discussion about low-frequency noise. How do we monitor that? How is that monitored? Again, I'm looking at, if there's a plan presented, you know, at that point in time, it gives the commission, at least in my mind, a great deal of flexibility just how that is going to be handled. And again, this is, if this is approved tonight, this is the first step and probably many steps for, you know, a project like this to, you know, to be approved. The one area that, and it kind of builds on what Mr. Sanders said, and I mentioned to, mentioned it to you at the last meeting as far as, you know, just the size. When I look at this, and certainly based upon what's been presented at the meeting this evening, I understand this is a regulation for the WI zone. But if you look at what's been presented, the various testimony that's been presented, to some degree, and I've talked to our corporate counsel about this, it almost is, this is spot zoning. I mean, you folks, I know we're talking about the entire zone, but there's certainly, there's been comments from, from the applicant as well as from the owner of, I believe, one of the properties that you're interested in. So I think as far as where you folks are interested in putting your building, I think that's fairly obvious. And as far as the size of the building, again, you folks are saying, oh, your testimony, we're looking to build a 350,000-square-foot building. So again, to me, that's somewhat of a, almost of a spot zoning. I come back to, you know, we're interested, I think at least some commission members, the town, to some degree is interested in data centers. But I'm looking at this and saying, I'm still coming back to, you know, it's 350,000 cap for the zone, but I'm still looking at, there should be a cap on the size of a data center for a particular property. So an applicant- So an applicant can't come in, one applicant come in and grab it and, okay, now this is me and no one else can come in. So I come back to the proposal. For me, what I would feel comfortable with is if it's, you know, 350,000 in total for the, for the zone and a maximum on any property of 250,000 square feet, that's, that's right. I fully understand what you folks are saying concerning, you know, who you may be looking to market this to. I get that, but I also, you know, come back to, it's my general sense of, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's fairness or whatever, but I just think that I have just an issue with someone perhaps grabbing the whole, the whole, the whole allocation, if you would, and then just simply someone else is frozen out. I know you can come back and say, yeah, but if you guys like it, you can expand it. You can increase the square footage. I get that, but I'm not quite there. I'm really not there.
Can I, if I can speak?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. I, I think I said at the very first presentation we made two meetings back, that Eric and I attended that memorable commission meeting in April of 2022, where a prior data large expansive data center proposal was discussed. And we heard and took to heart many, many of the comments that were made at the time. And we approached this project with a sense that this is a town that is a little nervous about this use. So that it made sense to us to approach this from the standpoint of, let's try, let's try a prototype. Let's put in all the controls we need. Let's have a special permit process, experts, peer review, the whole nine yards to make as sure as anyone can make that this is going to be a good project for the town. But not open yourself up to a deluge of applications or of projects. If we misread that, we're more than happy to suggest removing the 350,000 foot cap for the zone. We could make it a 300,000 foot cap per building with no cap on the zone. That would work for us. But we were trying to be sensitive to what we thought would be more acceptable to the community, sort of a single prototype project. We weren't trying to exclude anybody else. We think it's a great use. We think it's a great use for anywhere but, you know, in an industrial zone. But that was our thinking, and it certainly wasn't trying to monopolize the situation. And I'm happy, as I said right a moment ago, we're more than happy to take out that aggregate limit and simply make a buildings, a per building limit of 300,000 feet, which would work for us, not that far from what you're proposing. So if that makes us more palatable, we're certainly open to that.
Again, I, I appreciate that. I'm not, not necessarily sure that, you know, I'm looking to say, let's, you know, increase the, let's increase the, you know, the, the amount of data centers, the square footage in that, in that particular zone. Again, I, again, when I'm coming back to the, you know, the 200,000 or the 250,000 square foot, again, you've mentioned the Norwalk Dennis Data Center, that's what, 168,000 square feet. And I understand that that was probably built, I'm not sure how many years ago, and certainly demand increases and all of that. But again, I come back to the 350 as far as the total. And, you know, from my, my perspective, looking at, you know, at 250 per data center, you know, per site, that's something that I feel comfortable with. Other commission members may feel totally different on that. That's certainly their, you know, their prerogative. Obviously, there's a lot of different opinions that commission members have on, on the entire, you know, on your entire proposal. But that's, you know, that's, that's where I come out. And I'm very appreciative for the changes or the inclusion that you made as far as the building, the aesthetics of the building, as far as the landscaping, giving the commission, you know, some latitude in saying, oh, we'd really like a little bit more. Again, I come back to the, the noise, the low frequency. I think what's provided in, you know, section H as well as what's provided in, in section F, I think that that gives us a, you know, a good bill, a good deal of latitude in addressing right now, which I think some people and probably even myself consider, I don't have, I don't know enough about certain things, but I think what's provided in here gives us the ability, you know, to go into, you know, and to learn more, if you would, if this were approved as we go through the process. So that's, those are my comments, and I appreciate yours. Again, this is a public hearing. I know we have a gentleman from the electric division that's here, and I guess, I'm sure there's some commission members that have quite, is it fair to say, that have comments or questions for our, our electric division? Is that, so I guess I, sir, if you would mind taking a seat, if you would, at one of the lower table, and, and I'll just ask commission members if they have some questions that they may have for the electric division to start off. And Mr. Revard, would you like to start, or would just?
I might as well. I just dove in before, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the time. Appreciate you coming out. For me, there's a lot of comments and worry about, echoing maybe some public comments that have come in about total energy demand on Wallingford and use of a data center type site. So, and I did some research, these, you know, these guys can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on these numbers, but roughly, you know, this, you know, it's about 150 to 300 watts per square foot. So I just did some rough calcs, figure out 300,000 in the zone, and we're talking anywhere from 45 to 90 megawatts of kind of power draw. And just for the public's understanding, you know, how does that compare to, say, to, you know, Wallingford's annual, Wallingford's usage today? Is it a big percentage, small percentage? Are there any concerns over, you know, drain and supply, and how, how might that work?
Well, that would be largely dictated on how the customer would be served, be it from a distribution solution, which is highly unlikely at that level, versus a transmission solution. At that level, that would customarily require the customer to construct a, a substation. 90 megawatts is medium to a medium large, a, a substation. That's when the siting process comes into play. There, it's required to fill out an ISO New England permission request. That has not yet been done. I did take a look at it. I spoke to the ISO. So it's a pretty lengthy process. It, it isn't something that would be fed from our existing infrastructure. It would require new infrastructure to be sited and built by the customer.
Sir, just for a second, if you could just please introduce yourself. I should have asked you to do that. I apologize.
I apologize. I'm Jake Arborio. I'm the general manager of the electric division.
Thank you. That good? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Borio, how long have you been the general manager of the electric division?
I've been the GM for about a year and a half. Prior to that, I was the distribution superintendent for another four. Prior to that, I spent 10 years in operations at Eversource and 10 years in engineering at United Illuminating.
Okay. So I think the big question is, with this large power draw for these data centers, how will it impact rates for Wallingford users? How will, you know, the, the demand for electricity, you know, you're just talking about transmission One of the, well, first question first, you know, how will an extreme draw of power affect the ratepayers of the town?
It will not. They would be connected to the system, be it distribution or transmission. There's rates already established for larger customers. If it moves into the transmission realm, those rates are set by ISO New England. We, having the franchise, we would meter a portion of it at some level. The distribution level, it's just not practical to feed a customer of that magnitude from the distribution level. As an example, new core is approximately 10 megawatts, and that's an entire circuit. So you're looking at a minimum of four to nine times new core. So it, from a rate perspective, it, it does not affect the customer.
Okay. And you're, you're, sound pretty definitive on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what costs would be borne by the electric division to service these guys?
Again, that's a bit of a difficult question. It, it depends on who owns the substation, if it is entirely of the responsibility of the customer, if the electric division elects to have a piece of it. Again, that's very dynamic, and where it's located, how it's tapped off of the transmission line. In all likelihood, if it does come off of the transmission line in that vicinity, Eversource will be a large factor in this. So.
Well, that's a good segue, because hearing the, the word Eversource, I think, sends a lot of shivers among the residents. So the data center will apparently need, you know, redundant power supply. Usually, there's two forms of, you know, electricity, and it sounded like the applicant was saying they had conversations with Eversource to, you know, be the secondary provider.
We have a franchise right to serve all customers in the town of Wallingford and Northford. Off of the distribution facilities, that's an Eversource asset within the town. For instance, Eversource owns a bulk of the transmission structures within the town of Wallingford. We own the substations and approximately a mile of transmission line in total, asset-wise.
So, okay. And basically, that leads to the, the, the big question. Eversource does have a footprint in Wallingford, and if they do some service to the data center, you know, is there any possibility that, you know, Eversource is going to have a controlling interest in the electric division?
No, absolutely not.
You, you sound very definitive on that as well, so I will take you at that face value. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Jake, thanks for coming. At the last meeting, the applicant had a PowerPoint presentation, simple follow-up questions to Commissioner Cohen's, and they said in that, Electric Power Usage, Slide 7, it says substantial fees to Wallingford Electric may reduce electric costs to residents. And you just said, no.
A rate is established by virtue of how the power is taken. It's, your rate does not affect.
Right.
Anyone else's.
Okay.
This is no different.
And then I, I asked last month on the record, you know, I said, if, if everything were to go forward, I said, who do you get your electric bill from? Eversource or Wallingford Electric? And they responded, Wallingford Electric. And that would, that's your understanding as well?
Again, depending on how it's fed and how it's metered, at what level. So at the, if it's exclusively transmission, it could be us, it could be the transmission owner. Right now, there's too many variables for me to answer that.
All right. And then if you could go back in the wayback machine, and I don't, I don't know if you were in Wallingford, we used to have a large facility in research, Bristol Myers Squibb. Did they have their own?
They had cogeneration.
Okay.
Yeah. Different animal.
Very different.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, but that, similar, they provided themselves. I mean, they, they had onsite at their expense for?
When called to do so. That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other commission members? Any questions? Mr. Pugini? Any comments? All right. Again, this is a public hearing. Sir, if you could just stay there, just in case there may be some questions from the public on this. Again, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public that would like to comment further on the application, please raise your hand. Let's see, okay, we'll start on the, we'll start on the left side, and yes, yes.
Sonia Wolf, 14 Oxford Trail. Well, I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this. It's, it's evident, and, and the commission's diligence as well. I, I live right in this neighborhood. It is open land right now, undeveloped land. You know, we are, this, as everyone knows, this abuts our residential community. And we, this is not an urban place like Norwalk. We are outside all the time in the summer, and in the fall, and in the spring, and we live on Spring Lake. And everybody has decks, and we have children, and we're, you know, we're, we live in a suburban area. And we live here, and with all due respect, you don't, and you, many of you do not, and live in that neighborhood either. It impacts us the very most, besides perhaps the whole electrical component, which sounds complicated frankly. That added sort of visual of all this extra electrical infrastructure also onsite, and the substations, and, you know, intense power lines, and that, you know, in all of this electro-magnetic, you know, 24/7 function is, you know, I don't know how much noise it will make, and that's been a big, nobody knows, that's a big, you know, question. And I know you're, you know, willing to, you know, set all kinds of limits on it. I am also of the, of the mind that once this is in, very hard to, never getting rid of it, never. It becomes a part of this residential neighborhood, an extension. I don't know why building is allowed there. I don't know, this parcel was removed from consideration for data center development by the town council two years ago for environmental sensitivity. I don't know why we're revisiting that now. It's kind of like, you know, laws are made to be broken. This isn't in the language, and now we're looking at, you know, well, we'll change the language and take out the word "not" and put "it is allowed." So I think that there is too much unknown. I think there's not enough precedence for something like this, next, right up next to a residential place in Connecticut. And this is the gateway right now. This is the gateway, changing the text. Yes, we could change the text, and then we could all spend a lot more time and money I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like it's four to nine times as, as big as far as energy consumption as any town, town business we have. That's what I'm understanding. So, yeah, I, you know, I'm here. I, I almost didn't come. Other people were sick. They wanted to come. I guess I, that's all I, you know, that's all I have to say. I'm concerned about the, I'm really, I am concerned about once it's, once this gate is open, then we're spending a lot of time on, on it, and there's a reason why it wasn't allowed in the first place. So, so I, I'm. So I, I'm asking you to stand by that. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, the lady in the back, please.
My name is Linda Prince Horn and I live at 10 Martin Trail, there's also Spring Lake. We keep talking here about the noise, well, why don't we get back to the basics of the water? You know, we get back to muddy river and what happened when Bristol Myers came in and what it's done to our lake that we live on. And when, you know, we don't have a water supply coming in, we have to smell and see muck. So, you know, noise is one thing, but a health issue is another. So I'm just asking you to take a look at that more than what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members on the left side. Mr. Bradley.
Yes.
I'm getting old, too old to do this stuff.
Join the crowd.
You got a long way to go to catch up to me. Let me start with, with what I first said at the first hearing. If this passes, we know where it's going, okay? Keep that in mind. I'm not talking about today, tomorrow, but down the road. I have nothing against data centers. Data center would fit right in there, but the hum, the noise, that's the drawback. I use AI to do my summary here, artificial intelligence, and it was interesting. The first thing I put in was can data centers be noisy? And they came back with a lot of information as well as from others. And it came back with the first sentence, yes, absolutely, they can be. Data centers, I hate to reiterate this because you, you people know the hum that's, that they generate. If you read, it's in Virginia, it's in Texas, it's in other places of the country. Data centers can be noisy because of the many rack-mounted servers, blades, routers and other equipment that operate in the small space. Now, we're not talking a little rack. I've seen them go as high as the ceiling in data recovery centers. As businesses continue to pack more and more equipment into data centers, the noise levels are increasing. You know, we talk about AI, we talk about electric vehicles and what I remember, and probably you do too, when GotSpace came in here and they proposed, I think it was 10 data centers, not in the Gillespie property, okay? Two behind the Hilton. Now, if there's hum that's being generated, you can imagine how the Hilton would feel. The constant hum from data centers can be distributed to daily life for nearby residents in my neighborhood. Affect property values and is loud enough to cause hearing damage, stress and anxiety when continuously exposed to it. The noise from data centers, especially the low-frequency sounds from cooling systems, ventilation and the rack-mounted equipment can travel quite a distance. These frequencies, from what I read, travel in a straight line and when they hit something, it doesn't go through. It goes up and over. I measured, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, the decibel rating from my house, I'm about a quarter mile from 91. And I measured it for like four or five hours from in the morning till, and then another snapshot around returning traffic. And the max decibel reading that I got of cumulative was 85 decibels. The average was 65 decibel. The lowest was 45 decibel. I don't know about, enough about LNF, low-frequency noise, and how it's measured. I'm sure the town doesn't have the capability to measure LNF. You can probably do decibel. This can be particularly noticeable in quieter residential areas near data centers. The constant hum and vibration can sometimes be a significant source of noise pollution affecting the quality of life for those living nearby. On Hampton Trail, a lot of little kids there, okay? And the problem, I have a big problem with the setback that was handed out on this paper, 500 feet. I got a big problem with that. I can understand the trustee of the Gillespie property. I knew Dr. Gillespie when I moved there in '73, fine gentleman. That land has been open for decades. It was even open for decades before I even moved there. So I, I can understand where they're coming from. Eversource transfer line, where, where does that start?
Sir, if you'd like to answer that question for me, if you would, please.
They continue in a number of, of directions. So there's, there's several lines there. So which line would be utilized, I do not know. Some continue to Southington, one or two terminate to Wallingford substations and there's a number that continue all the way down to Millstone.
And that terminates where?
In several locations.
In town?
One or two will, not all of them.
Is there one up on Research Parkway?
Yes.
And do we pay a fee for using their line?
The electric division pays a transmission fee, which is for the infrastructure only to Eversource. Our ownership stops at the termination, which is within the confines of the substation itself. The energy itself, we do not pay Eversource.
And what's that based on?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Pardon? What, what's that based on?
What's what based on, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The use?
The...
Or the transmission?
The infrastructure is based on a rate compiled by ISO New England, a third party.
And who's that controlled by? Eversource?
Absolutely not.
No?
Eversource is governed by ISO New England, no different than we are. We operate in the exact same fashion as Eversource and United Illuminating. Eversource pays avant-grid for portions of the line that they own, that Eversource is There's other portions of the lines that are owned by third parties. A payment goes to those third parties. It's, it depends on who owns the specific infrastructure and the numbers change based on the rate increasing or decreasing on the asset itself.
Final thing, workshop, I know it's been thrown around up there. Is that feasible, another workshop? Because there's a lot, I think, to digest here.
Sir, we have an app, we have an application that's before us, this commission, this is our third meeting on this.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate, I'm not sure other commission members feel, but I think it's appropriate that this evening that we vote on this, you know, this, this application. Certainly, if the applicant would like to withdraw their, withdraw their application, that's their prerogative. I seriously doubt that, that they would want to do that, but that's, that's their option if they wanted to and then the commission could consider a workshop, but we have an application that's before us, we need to act on that application. And again, this is our third meeting. I think a lot of the issues that have, there's been some new issues that have come up this evening, but I think a good number of the issues that have come up, you know, this evening has been discussed in the past and, you know, the applicant has either addressed them or indicated why they can or cannot, or not can or cannot, but what issues they may have with respect to addressing those issues. So, I mean, we are, we're here and again, I think we're here to make some type of determination on this application, again, unless you can convince the applicant to withdraw the application and I think you have a tall order on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anyone else on the left side of the, yes, we'll start with the young lady and then we'll go to the gentleman. And name and address, please.
Linda Beesaw, 21 Hampton Trail. I just want to add to what Linda had said about Spring Lake and you had mentioned about the wildlife as well, that we do have a few animals there, they're not quite endangered, but they are being looked at. We have monarch butterflies, bumblebees, box turtles, eagles and to the low frequencies, you know, we all know like animals hear it more than we do, that will drive them away and the pollution from the building will wipe out our lake. So I think that should be looked at.
Thank you. Yes, and a gentleman, I believe, had...
Jack Aragoni, 18 Martin Trail. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Cohen for inviting or wanting to have an electric official here tonight. I think it's been an eye-opener. So we may or may not be getting paid for electric in Wallingford. Did I understand that correctly?
Your question again, sir, was what?
One of the big driving things earlier was that we were gonna be making, was gonna cut our electric bills and it was good for Wallingford to have this large power source. It may not help us at all. Is that correct?
I have no clue on that. I don't know if the electric division would like to comment on that.
If I understand the correct, the question correctly, no, it would just be an additional customer that, that uses a considerable amount of energy. It, it won't affect the general population.
Last week, Mr. Fitzsimmons brought up the train. I live on Spring Lake, I hear that train too. Seems like we have a couple engineers are pretty horn-happy, I think, I think it's quarter after five. I'm three miles away and why am I hearing it? So I researched it. Come to find out, a train is not supposed to exceed 110 decibel, which, if I had to guess, I'd say was 400. I'm assuming it's 110, like the regulation says. They also have to blow that horn at 440 hertz and there's a reason for that. 110 decibel, and it's, this is explained in the regulation, 110 decibel at 440, is a very efficient sound for traveling a long distance and it cuts through background noise. So I guess that's why I'm hearing it, along with the fact, there's a thing called temperature inversion. I kind of think of it as a ceiling and it's not exactly echoing, but refraction of the sound. The sound will go up and bounce back down. I guess the radio people know all about this with sending signals. I'm three miles away from that train, I hear it. I'm gonna be a quarter mile away from the data center and they're talking about they're gonna project the sound up. I guess you know where it's going. I also hear the train's engines. I can hear them accelerating, going through and, again, it's probably quarter after five in the morning and, you know, things are very quiet. I can't hear the engines, so the question I have, I looked up how much horsepower is one of those engines, woke them up, 4,000 something, and I had just given you a paper about the horsepower of a Caterpillar generator, more than 4,000. Are you gonna be hearing this generator testing in downtown Wallingford? So it's gonna go both ways. I just want to mention a jackhammer is 130 decibel. I've never heard a jackhammer coming from downtown. Something bothered me even before I saw the, the new revision tonight. Mr. Allison, you want to be able to use water in some way, geothermal or... I'm reading that very closely and it said you're not going to reuse one-time use of water. To me, one, one-time use of water is what's referred to as pump and dump in a geothermal business. So you're not gonna pump and dump. You can drill a hole here and drill a hole over there and you take the water out of one and put it in the other and let the ground absorb the heat. I'd prepared this for Mr. Allison, but I think it's gonna pertain to the whole discussion. And this is about the, in your regulations, if you're going, going to allow liquid cooling. The applicant stated... The applicant stated cooling will be air to hair, air, like our homes' air conditioning. The new trend for data centers is higher watt density equipment cooled with liquid for better heat removal. Obviously, liquid cools much quicker than air. Once the equipment is cooled, there will be a few ways to subsequently discharge, discard the heat. One is geothermally. Let, I want to talk about that amount of heat just for a second. Picture a 24-foot diameter above-ground swimming pool. It's springtime, the ice just melted. Let's put a 50-megawatt heater into it, and we'll have it up to 212 degrees in seven minutes. If you want to think big, the Mackenzie Reservoir, 48 acres surface area. It contains 111 acre-feet of water. Pump 100 megawatts into that, we'll have that up to 212 degrees in one month. I guess we're going to try to cook ourselves with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public on the left side of the auditorium? Seeing none, we'll go to the center. Anyone on the center like to speak? Yes. Can I just have a show of hands of other individuals that like to speak from the public? I see one gentleman, a few other gentlemen. Okay. Yes, please, name and address.
Good evening. Kristen Demilio, 677 Williams Road, in the Watershed Interchange District, and the subject of tonight's hearing. After the last meeting, I had the opportunity to discuss this data center project with some of the residents who oppose it. And I greatly appreciated this conversation. One of the things that came up was the issue of by-right zoning. Some of the residents were saying that a warehouse or distribution center would never be built on my property because of public outcry. So I just want to take a moment for the benefit of some members of the public. I understand the commissioners are aware of this, that anyone wishing to build a warehouse or distribution center, or a daycare center, does not have to ask for a special permit. This isn't about open space or a data center. This is about a warehouse or a data center. I know that this data center idea is unpopular with some of the people who would live around it. But what I understood from my conversations is that nothing that would be built on this land will be popular. The Sierra Club article referenced at the last meeting actually supports what I'm saying, that when you have by-right zoning, you end up like Manassas, Virginia, with 300 data centers in one county. This is not that. A special permit provides control, transparency, and limitations for this particular form of development. I would gently remind anyone living in or around the Watershed District that nature was uprooted for their homes to be built. Residents need places to live. Businesses need places to go for Wallingford to thrive. So my approach is to find the least bad option, which is why I'm here. And this proposed use leaves 80% of the land intact. A warehouse would take up half of the land, and there'd be traffic going in and out. And noise would be something that we, would be much harder to regulate than you could regulate with a data center and the low-frequency hum that everyone is rightfully concerned about. If it were the decision of this commission to not allow even the possibility of a data center application, I would have to sell the property to someone who does not need a special permit. And that means no public hearing, that means no delays, that means no workshops. And what that means in all likelihood is a warehouse or a distribution center, realistically. I appreciate what one of the commissioners said at the last meeting, which was at a data center, that which would, is that a warehouse could be built on my property today. Some very basic conditions, conditions would have to be met, and it would be approved. So it's clear to me that the highest and best use of this land is the one that leaves the most green space intact, the one that leaves the soils underneath undisturbed. And I just want to say that this is land that, as Mr. Bradley pointed out, has been in my family since 1968. And we have been paying taxes on it. And now we are selling it. I think the evidence shows this is the most responsible path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left side of the center? I don't see anyone raising their hand, so I'll go to the gentleman on the right side. And you guys can flip a coin, who wants to go first?
Good evening, gentlemen. Hank Baum, Chair of the EDC. I really want to appreciate the fact that this applicant has put forth the language for the text amendment. And I also recognize that it's very difficult sometimes to separate the text amendment from the application. So I appreciate the commissioners making that distinction as well. So as you're aware, the EDC is very supportive of the change in the text amendment to add data centers in there under special permit. Under the special permit, you're allowed to make any kind of regulations or requests or anything like that. We just need to get it on the books and because, you know, this is the way we're going from a technology standpoint. The gentleman here talked about the use of AI. I'm pretty sure that that data came from a data center somewhere in the United States. We're not, our computing power is not getting, going to get less, it's going to get more. And this is, as the lady said, probably the best and highest use that is less disturbing than many other uses that are already permitted in that zone. So again, thank you for bringing it out forward. I do have a question regarding the electric. So if the draw is coming from Wallingford Electric, and Wallingford Electric is a for-profit, right? Okay. So that means you're going to make a profit off of the extra electricity that will be drawn, correct? Okay. And since Wallingford Electric is part of the town, then is it conceivable that some of that, that profit could be used to offset any type of rate increases in the future going along? Is that a correct statement?
I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. And the next gentleman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin McInnany. I live at 16 Sunrise Circle in Wallingford, also with the EDC. You know, I'll back up what Hank said. I also had a couple of individual thoughts that I might share. I would also mention I'm a CPA, so, I mean, obviously the, the increase in property tax revenue speaks a lot to me, but that's not what I want to talk about today. You know, what, what I would say, it seems like there's a lot of concerns about the noise, you know, and I'm not going to underplay those, you know, those are very valid. And I think if we're all truthful, you know, to be honest, to say, we really don't know, you know, it's a lack of, of knowing, you know. What I would also say, and this is what's particularly exciting to me about the project, is oftentimes when you see newer types of technologies emerging, these types of problems typically follow. So what also follows and lies behind that are new technologies to mitigate those things. So, you know, a few people had expressed concerns about, you know, what, what are other towns seeing that we're not seeing? And I, I personally believe it could be that, but it could also be what do these gentlemen see in Wallingford that they don't see in other towns? You know, that could be another possible explanation. And, I mean, personally, as a, as a lifelong resident, I, I think it's a, it's a welcome new thing, you know, because what excites me more about the data center is the technology that a data center supports, you know? It could be technologies we're not even aware of yet, but as Hank had mentioned, you know, we know the need for computing is only going to go up. So I think we have a decision to make as a town. You know, we could either lag behind and wait for other towns to take the lead on something like this, or we can be on the forefront. And if we're going to do that, I think we can only hope to work with partners in this that are committed to hearing the concerns of the residents and committed to doing whatever they can to mitigate those concerns. And from what I can tell in this proposal, I'm getting the impression that they're very committed to doing that, even though we don't have all the answers yet. That's my personal belief. And the only other thing I would add, no, in, in relation to the sound, I was wondering, you know, I went to this, there's this place, Q's and Brew's in Bramford. And if you go to that, the jukebox, you know, you could pay extra and like jump the line. So I'm wondering if we could put like a huge speaker on there, and the residents of the neighboring towns can kind of pick their song they're playing, or like maybe choose the ringtone like a phone, maybe make a little fun. I'm joking, but overall, I support it. I think it'd be good for the town overall.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public like to speak in the center of the auditorium? Yes, I see a woman back there would like to speak.
My name is Beverly Morse, and I live at 174 High Hill Road, and I've lived there since 1978.
If you could step forward just a little bit more toward the microphone?
Oh, okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, I've been coming to the meetings to be more aware of what's going on. And I hear all the studies that have been done, the noise studies, and the this study, and the that study. And as I sat when the Amazon was trying to get into Bristol Meyer property and all, and they're saying, there's absolutely no noise, you can't hear anything, we've done a study. Well, I heard it. I lived it, I heard it. I can hear 91 at times, I heard Bristol Meyer building going down, I heard the backup noises all day long on the bulldozers as they were knocking the building over. So sometimes I wonder, certain studies that are presented at these meetings, where they're getting their results from? I've lived through, when you talk about the substation, and this may need another substation, is it going to be as lovely as the substation that's on Carpenter Lane? Because when that was put in, we were promised you would not see it from the road. You wouldn't see it. Take a ride on Carpenter Lane, and I bet you can see it. Eversource came through after the big storm, and you have to understand, when my husband and I, we were younger, I won't give you the age, when we built that house, and we thought, this is great. There's power lines across the street, they can't build on this side of the power lines. We will have woods across the street. I grew up on North Island Road when it was a dirt road. I was very young then. We had farmland across the street. That's why I moved to High Hill Road. That's the type of neighborhood that I wanted. Well, the substation is there, it glows many times at night. Eversource came through, there's a big storm, they have to clear cut. So a bunch of our neighbors, we fought that. Why do you have to clear cut? My neighbor's husband, I think it was about probably nine or 10 years ago, and I went across the street, and we took photos of where the trees were in reference to the power lines. Okay? So when Eversource came through and they wanted to clear cut, that's because the trees were encroaching on the power lines, and they could cut a power line down. We took photos again, we compared them, the trees hadn't moved any closer. So we had a meeting with some of the Eversource people, and the first thing he said to us was, we need to clear these lines to provide you with power. And we said, we have our own electric company. And he said, oh. All right? So that sales pitch was done. So then we had to fight so they wouldn't cut as much, all right? They left some, and then we had to argue and got some shrubs put in on the edge of the road to cover it up. It's, everything is an argument, everything is a fight. And you get promises, you hear things, but then it doesn't happen. One of the things, and Mayor Dickinson was there, and I had, we had done some photo books, and so he had, we had some information to give him. And, and so he's there, and the substation now has this beautiful white wall in front of it. It's great, okay? So somebody mentioned, well, why didn't they paint it green? Or brown? Why is it white? Well, nobody knew from Eversource. And then my neighbor's husband said, was that wall on the specs that were approved for this substation? Nobody knew that. Because once someone gets in, and that was my fear with Amazon, then they just do what they want to do. And that's what it seems to myself and to other people. But I understand that this lady wants to, and her family would like to sell their property. I understand that. I don't know if there's another use that we can do besides putting another building on it with a foundation, whether it's a warehouse, whether it's a sub database or whatever. But I just think, could it be farmland? Could it be something else? I understand that. But again, what is our goal for our town? How much do we have to build it up? And what is the goal for our area of the town? We moved there for a certain reason, and it just seems like everyone is chomping at the bit to use whatever we can and build it up. And that changes the whole environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public in the center of the auditorium that'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll go to the right side. I saw you, Don, with your hand up.
Also, our commission gave all my hot topics. I'll save, save my time.
Okay. Again, any members of the public? All right, I would bring it back to commission members if they have any, any comments, any additional comments they'd make. And then I'd certainly go back to the applicant before I, you know, close the public hearing. Yes, Mr. Rivard.
Sure. Thanks, everyone, for all their comments. You know, relatively new to the commission, so it's, it's interesting, been really interesting to me to see how, you know, all of this discussion has gone, you know, workshop or not. I think, I think the issues have come out. I prefer Wallingford to be on the forefront, number one, as well. So that instinct to, you know, progress forward is a driver for me. At the same time, I also prefer expanded open space and maintaining those areas as much as possible. What I've learned here, though, is, you know, the WI district was established, you know, with, with a purpose. And I, and I think we heard the, the owner of the property, well, trustee of the property, you know, reminded us, and I, I would urge those in the public who haven't to actually read the existing zoning there. There are several uses, including light industrial and others, that don't, you know, require any special permit, especially warehousing and the other, that, that would be building in this location. If I could snap my fingers, I would say, you know, maybe we, you know, the town should have bought that property years ago. Maybe, you know, something else should have been done, but we are where we are. And, you know, I'm not a voting member, so I don't have that on my conscience, but at the same time, I feel like I should make my views heard on this irrespective of that. I think that the additional control offered by special permit by allowing this use puts in the hands of the Planning and Zoning Commission more control than might otherwise exist for uses that require no special permit today. And, you know, that's where I would stand on this. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Other commission members? Yeah, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will address one thing in the text. I do agree with, Mr. Bradley brought this up, and I had this, had this marked myself that 410B data center building should not be located less than 500 feet from the boundary. Yeah, in the past, you know, we've had 1,000 feet. So, you know, I, I think it should be 1,000. I, I, I want to address the comments about my comments about a workshop. It goes without saying that we are here to rule on this text amendment. That has never been in question. As Mr. Fitzsimmons said, part of the name of our commission is planning and zoning. When I brought up the comments about a workshop... and zoning. When I brought up the comments about a workshop, that was directed basically at us. Having a workshop over this very intensive topic would serve us and the public in the better interest to understand what we're getting into. I never said that the applicant had to do a workshop. That was directed at us. So I want to correct the record on that for the comments that were made about the workshop. And I, and I'll leave it at that. Part of, part of our charge is planning, and, you know, this, this text amendment, again, has a lot with it. And I, I, I think we need more planning. I, I went through a lot of other issues. I'm not going to rehash them. I think everybody has heard them for the last three meetings. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Other commission members? Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And in relation, in relation to this, I'll do my best to be brief. The last public speaker had talked about the, the regulation, and then Commissioner Rivard raised it. Section 4.10 of the Wallingford's regulation, zoning regulations, says the watershed interchange district, the WI, the purpose is to utilize land with accessibility to Interstate Route 91 located in the Wallingford Watershed Protection District in a manner designed to best protect the town's public drinking water supply resources while allowing low intensity uses and emerging technology, technological development. I think based upon the evidence that's been presented, you know, and, and the volume of information received, as I said earlier, I'm generally in favor of this text amendment with some minor changes. I think the idea would be that this would prioritize low density uses without compromising the town's public drinking water supply. It would generally, the amendment would allow for low environmental impact and minimal resources. This use would generate minimal traffic and parking requirements compared to other permitted uses in the WI. Other uses, quite frankly, are much more intense, generating more traffic and environmental impact. By approving the amendment, it's no way allowing a data center. It only allows an applicant to present a proposal and request for a special permit for a data center. I do have, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate now, I do have mechanical questions. And, and I don't know if it's, I'd prefer to come from the town planner, but mechanically, if I could through you.
Absolutely.
If this amendment was approved, would the applicant or similar or somebody else, would they need to go to the town council, the mayor, first for a permit like the folks did at Gottspace? Or does it come before us, then the council? Like, the mechanics of this are different because of the tax incentive to the state of Connecticut. What, what would be the steps, if you don't mind walking me through that?
They could do it either way they choose. It's just, I think they wanted to go through the planning and zoning process first, make sure they have approvals, and then go to the town council for that instead of going the opposite direction. So it can be done either way. It's just a matter of how the applicant wants to proceed with it.
So the state didn't outline the roadmap of X, Y, and Z, or A, B, C. It's, it just talks about the, talks about the necessary steps, but it doesn't give an order?
Correct, yes.
All right. And, and am I correct that the town council and the mayor's office has to approve something for them that is not related to an application for a special permit?
Correct, yes. They have to approve a host agreement.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted mechanics of, of that. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commission members? Yeah, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned earlier, I'm, if we're asked to vote on the amendment, the, or the proposed revision that we have, I don't think it's, it's vastly improved since October, but I don't know that it's quite what I would prefer. Like, Commissioner Rivard, I'm not a voting member, but I'm just not comfortable with the optics and the reality of the, of what I mentioned earlier, the cap on the zone, that one, you know, the first one out of the gate is nearly there. I think there's probably, I think we should give some thought to that and be wise about it. I realize we're up against the clock, but as, as we're currently at on that issue, I'm not comfortable with where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you've heard the, you know, you've heard comments from, from the commission, you've heard comments from the, you know, from the public, you've heard my comments, again, concerning, it kind of goes back to what Mr. Sanders says as far as the cap, as far as, you know, what, what I would feel, you know, what I feel comfortable with. Again, thinking about it, I could see increasing it to 400 in total, but 250 for any one project. That's, you know, that's, that's where I come out on it. But again, it's your turn to comment as you like on all the various comments that were made and the information was provided.
Thank you. I, I don't want to be redundant and, and repeat a lot of what I've said before, but as to this point, we put, we had suggested the 350,000 square foot cap for what we thought would be a beneficial purpose. It was not for our benefit, and, and we are perfectly amenable to having that limit raised or eliminated, whatever the commission sees fit to do. In terms of an individual size, our, we, we would like to build 300,000 feet. If you'd be comfortable, perhaps the regulation could say maximum of 250, but giving the commission in its discretion, authority to increase that by up to 50,000 feet upon a showing of, you know, no material impact, or however you'd want to word that, perhaps that would work. But we, you know, if, if we have to live, live with a limit of 250,000 feet, we will do our best to do that. I am concerned about the marketplace. The marketplace wants bigger buildings, and they want more capacity. We're all starting to use AI. Just a little tidbit I heard, when you do a search with AI versus Google, it's 10 times the power required. So that's why, that's the world we're in right now, and that's not going to change. The only other thing I would say is that we are genuinely trying to address the concerns that have been raised. We think they're legitimate. There's no concern that we've heard that we think is, is inappropriate. And we'd like to think of ourselves as partners with you and the other departments in the town in moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I guess at this point, Mr. Pugini, you have any final comments?
I don't. I think they addressed everything that we talked through. And I think, as long as you're okay with the cap the way it is, I think, go ahead and vote, I guess.
All right. Well, at this point in time, I think I would like to close the public hearing. After we have closed the public hearing, then the five commission members that are going to vote on this application then can discuss, you know, amongst themselves as far as how they would like to proceed. Would that, commission members feel that's the most appropriate way to go here? Good. That being said, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application 501-24, zoning text amendment, WI zone, data center, charter development LLC.
Second. Second, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting with Mr. Cohen.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes. And I guess at this point in time, I think there's several issues that we need to consider with respect to that. I know that the applicant had included some additional language on section 7G and 7.7. And if, you please repeat that, Mr. Vinoi? Do you have the, that additional language?
I worked with the applicant. They should, the applicant should have that.
If you've worked with them, I assume that you've had it. If, yeah, if someone could provide that.
Yep. He can read it, or I can read what he had. The, the landscape plan shall incorporate revisions and changes provided by the commission during the special permit process.
Little slower.
The landscape plan shall incorporate revisions and changes provided by the commission during the special permit process.
During the special.
Permit process.
Thank you. Any other thing that? Excuse me. The other thing that was discussed was increasing the, increasing the cap as far as from 350 to 400,000 in total for all projects within the WI zone. And capping, though, at 250 for a, you know, for a, a facility on a specific property. Again, I'm not sure how commission members feel about that. I'd entertain any, any suggestions or any comments. Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we heard from the, the applicant that they're looking for 300 pretty firm. I don't see an issue with increasing the overall aggregate up to as much as, I would say, 500 total, because it's a special permit. We can always adjust size down. And if somebody's going to come in with an application that's going to take up 60% of the total aggregate for the district, they're going to have to significantly prove to us that it warrants a 60% grab. So I think that allows for open market, but doesn't allow for a, for a free flow, a free flow of applications to come in. I think we max it at the 300. And then if we see an application at 300, and it doesn't make sense, it's a special permit. We can say, this is, you know, while this does meet the maximum of the language here, we can cut it down. To bring it up over to, if we went to 50, and we brought it up to 300, I think then we're going to be fighting our own text. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, folks. I, I, I'm listening to it. I'm not quite sure that I, if, if I, if I really understand it, to be, you know, to be frank with you. And again, I think it's difficult if someone comes in and says, you know, I want 300, 400, whatever may be. We look at it and say, we're going to cut it down because of something. I'm, I'm not sure how you go about doing that and justifying it. But that's, that's just, you know, that, that's just my, you know, my position on it. To me, I feel much more comfortable with it's, it's 400, and it's two, you know, and it's 250. But again, that's, again, that's, that's your position. I certainly respect that.
And I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, Mr. Chairman, and I, I, I don't see if there was, if there was a cap at 250, how we could go beyond 250, is what I'm getting at. So whatever number we say is the total cap, the text is going to restrict that as the maximum. So whatever number we put, I think that's the number that we have to be comfortable with. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Sure. No, I, I understand. And again, I believe, I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but I think the words came out of them, that if it was 250, that they could, you know, they could live with 250. Again, that's, as I recall them saying that. But other commission members, any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
I think part of it is, I, I think the reason what we're struggling with the, the numbers, as Commissioner Allison mentioned, is nowhere else in our regs am I familiar with we do this. So that, so it's not normal, right? Let's, let's, let's start there, you know? And so I'm, I'm struggling with the number, because we don't say, as we've all been approached in town, can't you limit the number of car washes? Can't you limit the number of coffee shops? I mean, that's just, regulations generally doesn't do that. So here's a unique situation where we're saying, if we allow data centers, we're saying, well, there'll be no more than X. So it's, it's a little different for us. So I, but, you know, we've all talked about it. You know, it's their application request, and, you know, we've got to act on it. Generally, I, I, you threw me on the 500,000. You threw me on that, because that's just, it's so much in the WI. Considering we've never done it in other zones, I, I think, I like the chairman's suggestion of 400, 250 max per parcel, so to speak, as a working first number, working potential. I mean, you know, we don't, we don't know what we don't know, right? I just, I'm, I'm just thinking of, and, and you and I have had this conversation. People ask it, how many more car washes are we going to improve? Well, we just don't limit things like that. This is a limit, you know? So I'm, I'm comfortable with the chairman's suggestion of going with not to exceed 400,000 square feet and no parcel above 250 square feet, if I heard that correctly.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yeah. Mr. Allison.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question procedurally.
Sure.
Just based on Mr. Fitzsimmons' comments. Let's just say hypothetically, there's 400 total, 250 cap per, per building size. And then an applicant comes in and says, hey, we want to come in with another text amendment to up the building size to 300, and we want to tack on 50,000 to our existing 250. Is that something that could then be done procedurally based on our regs? I think so, down the road, assuming that the data center stuff works. It comes out good. They're good neighbors. Everything makes sense. It's something down the road that is a possibility, I would think. But is that possible?
Any, any restrictions we put in would have to be amended again.
It'd be a zoning text amendment again.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just, I, I would think it's just amending our zoning regulations.
Then I'm good with your suggestion.
Okay. All right. At this point in time, any other discussion, any other concerns that commission members would like to express before I entertain a motion on the application? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 501-24 text, a zoning text amendment, charter development LLC data center. A zoning text amendment to add data center as an allowed use by special permit under section 4.10.0.C.4 watershed interchange district, and to add a definition of data center to section 2.2 on revised language dated December 2, 2025, because, with the following changes. In section 7.5, section A, changed 350,000 to 400 in total for all WI zones, and capping each parcel by 250,000 max. Two, with addition to 7.5, section G, landscape plan shall incorporate revisions and changes provided by commission during the special permit process.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
No. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes. Your application's been approved, gentlemen. Have a good evening. I do want to. Members of the commission. Sure. I, I do want to say, first of all, I appreciate the, you know, the efforts that you folks have put in in order to attempt to address the, you know, the concerns, the issues of the, you know, of this commission. I do also want to point out to the public that this is just the first step, perhaps in many, if in fact, an application comes forward for data centers. So this is, allows for data centers in the WI zone, but there's, would be a long process, I would think, if, when, once an application does come forward. So with that, gentlemen, have a good evening. Thank you. Which brings us to our next item on the agenda. It's a text amendment from the Planning and Zoning Commission for section 2.2, a walkway. And I'd ask the applicant to come forward to prepare, prepare for the presentation, but I And I'd ask the applicant to come forward to prepare for the presentation, but I understand that it's Mr. Pugini. So at this point in time, Mr. Allenson, if you would please read the legal notice and then note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number nine zero three dash two four text amendment to add a definition of walkway to section two point two and amend the current definition of building to exclude walkway. We have notice to the surrounding town clerks from the Office of the Town Planner dated November seventh, two thousand twenty four. The proposed additional text and definitions to section two point two dated eleven seven two thousand twenty four. The application and correspondence to the local regional councils of governments dated, no date, correspondence to the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, signed by J. H. Torrance Downs to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated November eighteenth, two thousand twenty four, correspondence from the Noggettuck Valley Council of Governments, Keith Rosenfield, Senior Community Planner to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated November nineteenth, two thousand twenty four, email correspondence from Sean Doherty to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, correspondence from Victoria DeVito to the leaders of the Wallingford Town Council, date of receipt, December fourth, two thousand twenty four, correspond, email correspondence from David Rodriguez to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, email correspondence from Steve Knight to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, email correspondence from Jennifer M. F. Hillgan Santa Esquire to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, correspondence from Elizabeth Landau to the Wallingford Town Council, councilors, date of receipt, December fourth, two thousand twenty four, email correspondence from Gregory Madar to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, email correspondence from Marshall Rubin to Kevin Pugini, Town Planner, dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four, and correspondence from Susan Lucier to the Town Planner and Planning and Zoning Commission dated December fourth, two thousand twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. Mr. Pugini, it's all your, excuse me, it's all yours.
I was approached by the mayor's office to initiate this text amendment. Since the town council allowed, as you can see in his letter dated December fifth, the town council allowed the air right easement for the Chote Pedestrian Bridge, even though this amendment isn't specifically for that, it would apply to that project as well as other pedestrian bridges in the future. I was asked to write an amendment that would not require the abutments if over eight feet to require a variance. I wasn't asked to write anything regarding pedestrian bridges specifically or anything to do with the design elements of pedestrian bridges. So this would just amend it so the abutments if over eight feet would not require a variance for being in the setback, if that explains it.
Commission members, questions for Mr. Pugini? Seeing no questions from the from the public, excuse me, from the commission members on this. Again, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to speak on the application, please come forward with their name and address. Yes, gentleman in the back.
My name is Phil Uker and my address is twenty nine Curtis Avenue. Let me just open by saying I'm not opposed to pedestrian bridges or safety. I just am opposed to the amendment as written. I think it's poorly composed, vague, and too liberal in what it would perhaps allow. So I was hoping I could just run through three things and get some feedback on these. Number one would be sort of a today versus tomorrow. Mr. Fitzsimmons earlier asked about the mechanics for the process. So as written now, what would be the mechanics for a pedestrian bridge to get passed through and constructed?
It's my understanding, again, Mr. Pugini, you can answer that question, but as far as that would have to come before the would have to come before the commission, correct?
Correct, yes. So if it was, if the abutments are over eight feet, it would require a variance for the setbacks, and then it would require site plan approval for each property involved because it spans, it would span two properties, even though same ownership, they're separate parcels.
But again, this proposes there would not be a variance would not be required.
Correct, if this text amendment.
It allows the abutments, but I, correct me if I'm wrong, your your question is, if this were to be approved, then if someone wanted to build a bridge, how would how would that get approved? That would, is that correct?
Both questions. I'm asking as the amendments, as the regulations are written now, what the process would be and then how this would change that process. So currently, what would happen and with the amendment, what would happen?
Okay. So again, if this want, if someone wanted to build without this amendment, someone wanted to to build the bridge, how would that occur?
If the abutments were under eight feet, they can just build it. We don't have any real restrictions as long as the air easement's in place and as long as it meets DOT requirements and or town requirements for, you know, passing over either town or state road, that's how it would be built.
So they would not need a variance?
If it if the abutments were under eight feet, no. So it's just like putting a wall in your front yard. If it's over eight feet, it requires a variance. If it's not, it doesn't.
Does that address your question, sir?
It's getting there, yeah. So if it was under eight feet, it would not require a variance, you know, it would go straight to a site plan?
Yeah, depending on the specifics of it, how much it would change the site and everything else. You know, we haven't really had an instance of building a bridge that I could think of unless the commission has any instances of building bridges, but I haven't seen anything so far except for town replacements.
Okay. And it would, is it true that it would also not require a variance if it was adhering to the front yard setbacks?
Correct, yes. Obviously, if the reason for this text amendment is because anything over eight feet, any anything that's not excluded in the building definition requires a variance if it's in the setbacks.
If it's in the setbacks. So a bridge with a long enough span could avoid getting a variance.
Correct, yeah, if it's, you know, if the abutments or the structure doesn't comply with our building definition.
Okay. So if I understand, the current, the current regulations do allow for the construction of a pedestrian bridge?
Yes.
Okay. So I lean that how would the passing of this amendment change that application process? It would remove a variance.
Correct, yeah.
Would it also remove the site plan review?
No.
So under our regulations, it requires a site plan for buildings, but this would no longer be a building.
It would be a, there would still be changes to the site that would be required.
Okay. Would it require a special permit or a?
Unless the use is intensifying, then no, it would just be a site plan revision.
Okay, good, thank you. Second, when I heard about text amendments, I was drawn to section eight two of the Connecticut General Statutes. There's generally a two-part rule for upholding text amendments, sort of a standard to be passed. So I looked through there and just briefly, part A one allows for limits to be placed on the size and location of structures. So the commission could, as part of this amendment, place limitations on the size and the location of a structure. Does this amendment absolve a pedestrian bridge from any limitations on size, no height limitation, no limitations for illumination or signage? It would just be a bridge with no limitations whatsoever?
I believe that the town council did put restrictions on the air easement. So, you know, we haven't had bridges really reviewed heavily in the planning and zoning process prior to this, unless the commission thinks differently, that they would want to put restrictions in. That's really up to the commission to decide that.
So as worded, a fence would have more restrictions than a pedestrian bridge over a road. Because a fence would, over eight feet high, a fence would be a building and therefore be subject to restrictions.
Yes.
The second section of eight two allows for regulations to be varied by district. This seems to be a regulation that would just be permitted in any district. Would it be possible to restrict pedestrian bridges to where they might make sense? For example, I live in a residential district, I can't imagine a pedestrian bridge being put across the street where I live. So would it be possible to restrict pedestrian bridges to Town Center, Route Five, places where we could expect to need a pedestrian bridge?
If the commission thinks that's necessary, that's really up to the commission. This isn't.
Okay.
My decision solely.
And then thirdly, it does allow for certain classes of structures to be regulated by special permit or special exception. For example, right now in our regulations, windmills and solar panels are specifically regulated by a special exception. It would seem to make sense to me to have something like a pedestrian bridge also go before the zoning board of appeals to receive a special exception. I think the wording for a special exception is especially suited to a pedestrian bridge. But as it's written now, I don't see any of those being applied, so it's hard for me to feel like we're upholding the regulations that we're supposed to be upholding. Thirdly, and this could be the last part, part of the proposal is to redefine walkways. Walkways are currently mentioned ten times in our regulations. So does this redefinition conflict with any of those ten mentions of walkways? Would it redefine some of those? Has anybody looked into that?
Mr. Pugini?
No, I have not. If you had mentioned it a while ago, I probably would have looked into it, but I don't see how it would conflict because it allows any pedestrian activity. And law department didn't see any conflict when they reviewed it, so.
So this has been reviewed by the law department?
Correct, yes.
By your corporate counsel?
Yep.
Okay. And then this could be the last part, again, to the chair, to the town planner. Specifically, I'm looking for the wording of the walkway, and I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'm just looking for a rephrasing of the interpretation. When I read the wording here, it says, walkway, any portion of a dedicated right of way or To my eye, that means if something is outside of a dedicated right of way or easement, it's not a walkway. This seems to restrict walkways to be within easements and rights of way.
If it's on a property, I don't know what you're getting at.
I'm saying to the end of allowing abutments on private property to be not classified as buildings, this does not seem to do that.
I'm confused. I don't know what's what he's asking.
If we read, it says any portion of a dedicated right of way or easement. So it specifically says a walkway is a portion of an easement or a right of way. Therefore, logically, if it's outside of the easement or right of the way, is not a walkway.
It's really up to the commission to either ask corporation counsel for an interpretation or I don't really know what he's getting at.
I wouldn't allow there to be a misinterpretation. I was looking for your interpretation tonight.
My interpretation is it's just creating a definition for a walkway and then excluding it as a building.
Then why would it include a restriction to being within a right of way or easement?
Because where else would you put a walkway?
You would put a bridge abutment on outside of the easement, outside of the right of way.
You would have to.
On private property.
It would have to go through an easement or a right of way.
But that would not be the portion that goes through the easement or right of way.
I think you're splitting hairs if the commission wants to.
Well, I think he may, I'm not sure if he is splitting hairs or not. I think that there's several commission members that, you know, are listening to what the gentleman's saying and says, gee, I I think that needs, you know, some, you know, some further, you know, review by our, you know, by our corporate counsel. I think that, that the general thought of majority of the commission members?
Sure, absolutely. Hate to kind of take your comments, but I was going to ask a question on this beforehand anyway. I mean, trying to understand the why are we trying to do this? Understand we don't want, and we've got a situation where we have an approved easement from the town council that we don't want to be subject to a variance. I mean, that's really the only pedestrian walkway I'm aware of. Okay, great. Can't we just, in the definition of a building, say, you know, walkways that have received special air rights easement of the town council, approval of the town council are not subject to be defined as a building in the regulations? And just write that right in there if that's what we're trying to achieve? I mean, it's.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's certainly a very good suggestion.
Because then we're not discussing, have we opened the box on everything forever?
Yeah. And again, I think the point is too that, you know, again, when we talk about, you know, walkways, where you can put them and height and all of that, that, to a very large degree, is what the town council had, you know, had decided as far as, you know, granting, you know, granting that easement or the air rights, what have you, and also specified, I believe, the, it gave some more specifics as far as what could be done. So I think that that's, if other commission members feel that that's appropriate, I think the suggestion by Mr. Revard certainly makes some sense and probably would then not necessitate moving this to to the next meeting. Comments? I would, no, I would prefer not to move, if people, if everyone is in agreement with what's been proposed by 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 Mr. Revard, then I think we could look to act on this application this evening. Yes, Mr. Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm I'm in agreement with Mr. Revard's amendment. I don't know of a walkway that is outside of a right of way or an easement, so I don't necessarily understand the gentleman's question, but I think to resolve all of the issues, that's, Mr. Revard's suggestion is certainly a much cleaner way of dealing with it.
So with that, I'd ask Mr. Revard to repeat that for Mr. Van Wijk.
Yes.
All right. So I would strike the definition of walkway, wouldn't include that, and I would suggest that under building.
You're talking two point two, right?
Two point two, section two point two.
Walkway.
You would leave walkway and you would say, walkways that have received special air rights easement, approval of the town council, are not subject to building variance approvals.
All right, so we're striking all of what's here in walkway?
Or we can leave it if we think we need it for other reasons, I suppose.
Okay. So then add another sentence that says, walkways would?
Walkways that have received special air rights easement, approval of the town council.
Town council, okay.
"...are not subject..."
Are not subject...
"...to building variance approvals." That feels like it's the intent of what's being tried to be done here.
Mr. Pacini, your comments on that?
I think it works for this purpose. I don't know if it'll work for future pedestrian bridges, but...
I think those would possibly be considered in the building regulations of the future if they don't, if they don't have a special approval of air rights by the town council.
As they say, we cross that bridge when it comes.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been waiting all night. Here it is.
It just feels like a special case versus carving out everything.
Yeah, I agree with you.
This is, this is why we have review by the commission, so I think that's, that works. I'm happy with that, so.
If I could ask, this has already been sent out to neighboring commission stuff with the wording here, and they are not here to review that new wording. Is it possible to change the wording at the meeting tonight without having previously sent out to neighboring towns and commissions?
Yes. Once it's set out, it goes to a public hearing, and then you could change it accordingly as long as you're not straying from what's in front of you. Correct.
Okay. Wonderful. And I guess, just in closing, looking back at the process by which this came forward, the, the town council did go through and permit an air easement for this. During those meetings, Councilor Fishbein specifically asked if this bridge going forward for Trowes Murray Hall would need to go through the regular procedures of planning and zoning, and town council attorney Small said yes, that this would go through the normal process. So, I'm just a little taken aback that, following that meeting, the mayor has seemed to step in and remove any sort of obstacles for this particular project, a project which is really, as we've said, I can't imagine any other pedestrian bridges really being proposed in the next decade or my lifetime. So, this, you mentioned spot zoning before, this seems to reek of favoritism toward one particular client and their particular project to make it easier for them to get it without having to go through the process. So, thank you. I'm, I'm opposed to this as written, as amended, as changed, so that's my say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, but I certainly appreciate your comments and some of the issues that you pointed out with this because I think it's, it's been in hand, so I appreciate that. Any other members of the public who'd like to talk on the application? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission members. Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
In regard to Mr. Uker's comments, and I think his first question was getting to where I was, and I just want to be on record, this only eliminates the need for the variance. No bridge could be built without planning and zoning approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this definition was meant to skip the ZBA process of proving a hardship to which grants variances.
Correct, yes.
Okay, yeah. And, forgive me awfully, I insure a building in Nashville that has a bridge that links two areas, and I can tell you, I've read all the agreements, it is done in other places. You know, it happens to go over a river, and, and I, obviously, as the insurance carrier, we're required to review all the contracts, so it is done. It's a, and if you think of, and I'm trying to think when, when Mr. Uker was talking, even, even the bridge that we have at the brand-new train station, it goes over the train track, right? I mean, so potentially, and again, there is a potential, and of course, you see it other places, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so it could, but I, I agree, it makes sense to, based upon the comments from Mr. Uker, send it back to counsel.
Wait, you mean send it back to counsel?
Are we not sending it back?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay, never mind.
No, there was a proposal as far as how, as far as changing the, changing the verbiage, so I think that's, that's where we are with that. So, with that, if there's no further comments from, from the public or commission members, I think we're all set. Yes, Mr. Sanders?
Just one point of clarification to the suggestion from Commissioner Revard. We could potentially lift that first sentence from walkways and use that as the definition in the building section. Just to make it easy for Vice Chair Vanoyt.
I think I'd just prefer to handle it the way we initially suggested it, in the way Mr. Revard suggested it, unless other commission members feel differently. So, I think we're, I think we're good with that. So, at this particular point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application nine-oh-three dash two-four zoning text amendment, planning and zoning walkways.
Right, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting by Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that we approve application nine-oh-three dash two-four zoning text amendment, planning and zoning walkways. Zoning text amendment to add a definition of walkway to section two-point-two and amend the definition of building to exclude walkways because it better defines the usage through variance with the following exception with two-point...
We're, we're not, we're not adding the definition of walkway, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You're not adding the definition of walkway, you're just amending the building definition, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm adding in section two-point-two walkways. Could be the last sentence. Right?
I thought we weren't, I thought we were getting rid of the definition of walkway and then just amending the building definition.
I don't believe that was...
No, I thought we were just adding another, the last, at, at the sentence at the end.
Of building?
No, walkway.
Walkway.
Oh, walkway.
Where it says roadway shoulders, period.
Oh, okay.
Then we would add, where? My chicken scratch. Two-point-two, walkway that receives special air rights easements from town council are not subject to...
Okay.
What are we saying? Variance approval, right? Building variance approval, I'm sorry. So, I'll say that again.
Whatever the right language of that is would work. My apologies.
It's good with the chicken scratch.
We'd like to repeat that one last time for Mr. Pacini.
All right, I'll do the whole thing. Zoning text amendment...
Mr. Revard, listen very carefully.
Yeah, amend as needed to add a definition of walkway to section two-point-two and amend the definition of building to exclude walkways with the following change in two-point-two. Walkways that receive special air rights easements from the town council are not subject to building variance approval.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Pacini, walkway would remain in the definition of building.
Correct.
You could, we can include a definition of walkway and then, unless anyone has disagreements with how it's defined, that would, I think the prior proposal was to take walkway out, out of building completely, and the sentence, I think, works at the end of building, unless you disagree, Kevin?
No, no, I was just making sure that was correct before I went forward. Perfect, go ahead then.
All right, we have a motion on the application.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor, voting by Mr., by Mr. Kohan, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Your application's been approved, Mr. Pacini. Moving on. Go to item number four, text and map amendment, planning and zoning commission, section four-point-seven downtown apartment district, DA. And again, Mr. Allinson, if you would please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number nine-zero-four dash two-four text and map amendment to extend the downtown apartment overlay district, DA, and to add language to section four-point-seven to allow affordable units subject to site plan approval. We have the proposed text amendment to section four-point-seven. We have the map overlay proposal, proposed zoning map, correspondence from the mayor's office to the commission dated December fifth, twenty-twenty-four, correspondence from Bob Winman, Sun One Development, to the planning and zoning commission dated December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Allinson. And, Mr. Pacini, again, if you could bring us up to date on what's being proposed here.
So, we've had discussions with our affordable housing group. They wanted to start adding affordable housing by right, and I thought it'd be a good starting point to look at the current downtown apartment district as its function is to allow multifamily dwelling units and existing in new buildings within designated areas of the downtown. So, this amendment would just extend the overlay district roughly across South Cherry Street to the corner of Ward Street, incorporating the Judd Square parcel as well as the eight parcels on the corner of South Cherry and Ward Street on the eastern side of the street. The color map has the, the change, and then the other map shows the existing downtown apartment overlay district. I didn't have an overlay district layer for the other map, so that's why there's two maps there. But essentially, you're extending the overlay district just across the street. That's the map change. And then, the text change would allow by right affordable residential dwelling units. So, the state just passed legislation that if we allow affordable housing by right, we get certain credits towards our unit count. So, I believe it's, for every, every time we add, say, I think it's point-two-five per unit that we allow by right, so for every unit, you get essentially a quarter of a unit extra. So, this was because the state is really pushing the TOD districts, downtown apartment district is in the TOD district. This amendment wouldn't have to change any actual zoning districts, it would just change the overlay district, and it's essentially would allow affordable housing, more units per acre by right, and if they go above the thirty percent, the commission may approve further density bonuses that exceed the thirty percent minimum requirement for affordable units as the site conditions allow on a per-application basis. And also, looking through the lot sizes in the downtown apartment district, it didn't seem as though many were able to meet the current twenty-five thousand square foot requirement, so for affordable, I'm proposing to reduce that requirement down to fifteen thousand square feet to essentially make it easier to find parcels to build affordable units. If that needs any clarification, please feel free to ask.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it, and, you know, I see on B-one, you know, again, you have the twenty-five thousand square feet, you know, for, you know, the parcel, and then it says, "Units an acre," you know, "Units, units of one room, thirty-five," and, and, you know, two, it's down to, it goes to thirty, but then when I get down to the affordable, affordable one, it's, "Units of one room, it's forty-five," so we're, you know, increasing, you know, the number of, and again, I don't think that we're ever going to hit forty-five acres, but all those numbers, you know, increase.
Yeah, we increase to allow more affordable units. Essentially, the, we're looking to increase our unit count, and it made sense that if they're going affordable to allow a percentage more than what's allowed by right, as market rate, kind of like we did with the incentive housing zone per the town center. If that's not something you're comfortable with, we can, you know, look at the numbers, but it makes sense to allow more affordable units if we're going to allow it than the same amount as market rate because we're looking to kind of expand our affordable unit count.
Do you have commission members with questions on this? I have to say, I'm just a, maybe it's just me in the hour of the day, but I'm a little confused on this.
So, right now, the, right now, the existing downtown apartment district allows a certain amount, this is just amending this to allow by site plan approval affordable residential dwelling units as defined by eight-thirty-G as a set-aside development, and then we would reduce the lot size to allow for more parcels to be developed, potentially for affordable, and then increase the amount of units per acre that would be allowed.
Commission members with comments on this? Absolutely. Mr. Fitzsimmons, help me out here.
Yeah, I think the area in red is new.
Correct, yeah.
The red is all new.
Yes. I think I accidentally copied the eleven-two-eighty-seven in there, but...
So, the top portion is market, hold on, it's market rate?
Correct.
And the red portion is non-market rate?
Correct.
And it has to meet the eight-thirty-G?
Has to meet the standard definition for set-aside development as defined.
So, market rate, if I have, I, I can, this is where, I can think it's the graph, so the units of one room and the, and market rate is thirty-five...
Yep.
Per acre, is that meaning thirty-five units per acre?
Correct, yep.
And the non-market rate, see, that's, it's missing a word, it's, and the units of one bit room, non-market rate is forty-five units per acre.
Correct.
It's per acre.
Yes.
It's a slash of throwing it because I, as I'm reading it myself, I'm looking at the numbers, so, so if you had twenty-five thousand square feet and minimum lot area per dwelling, and I wanted to put in two-bedroom units, I could put thirty units per acre.
Correct, yep.
And if it was non-market rate, it's forty.
Yes.
The bonus is ten.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank, it helps, it's, yeah, exactly. No, exactly. Little clarification, at least for me, was needed. I appreciate that, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yeah, I just copied the initial language, so if it was worded wrongly in nineteen-eighty-nine, then we could update the wording.
Commission members, any further comments? Any further clarification? Yes, Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I have two, two main things. One of them is that the total units per acre, I'm a numbers guy, I'm a math guy, and one at, one at forty-five, two is, two at forty per is eighty, three, it was, three comes out to seventy-five, four is eighty, five seventy-five.
Wait, what?
So, if you, if you, if you divide up the numbers, right, the total units based on per acre?
Oh, no, no, this is if you're, so if you're putting, say, like, a mixed-use development, you have studios, those are considered one-bedroom, you have a two-bedroom, and you have a three-bedroom, you're only allowed twenty-five per acre of the three-bedroom, and you're allowed forty-five per acre of the one-bedroom and forty per acre, so you're not, it's not going to be exponentially expanding if you have, you know, one, two, and three bedrooms, you're not going to be allowed forty-five, forty, and then, you know, does it multiply?
No, I think I understand that, but it's more the ratios that at two, you're ratio, at two, you're coming up with eighty total units, right? Three is seventy-five total units in terms of bedrooms. Four is eighty total units, five is seventy-five total units. The way, maybe I'm missing something.
Yes. Yeah, so if someone's going to build a full development of, say, all one-bedroom units are allowed forty-five units on one acre, and then if, if it's mixed, they have to do the math, so, you know, if you're going to build, say, say, forty, you're, you're allowed two-bedroom units, you're allowed forty whole entire units, so you, you kind of, you'd have to mix... So you kind of, you'd have to mix, imagine, do the math. That would be up to a, I mean, it's a way our town center is worded right now as well.
Okay. I think that the bigger thing for me is that I want to, you know, we've talked for a year I've been here on the board about really trying to address the housing problem, especially the below-market rate, and work with 830G and put, encourage development in places that make sense. And I think that this is great, a great effort to try to do that. So expecting, you know, good intentions all around and appreciating the efforts by developers who will want to partner with Wallingford to provide that housing that works for our residents and taxpayers and our plans. To address the decline in our affordable housing, we're going to have to go a lot beyond the minimum requirements that go into 830G. So I would be, I would ask if we could consider, is it, are we able, is it practical to recommend or to increase beyond the minimum state allowed percentage of 30% set aside for affordable and beyond the minimum state recommendation of set aside for 40 years? Should we be increasing in terms of our incentive the amount of housing that falls under affordable and perhaps even the length of set aside? Just to throw that out for discussion.
Yeah, we could put anything we want in our regs. If we allow it by right, we can say, you know, you're allowed, you have to do 50, 60% affordable if we're going to allow it by right. So that would be something that we can definitely look into. If it's something we want to discuss over the next couple of meetings or, you know, even.
It's, yeah, and the thought is simply that if we're going to make a serious dent in the hill we have to climb, we have to do more than meet minimums.
Yeah. And that's why I put the caveat, too, for anyone that wants to come in over that 30% minimum. They can, the commission can give them density bonuses to make it worth their while. So that's something that I thought, you know, 30% might be a good start with. And then if they want to do more, we can give them more density. So that's, that's where I'm at. If you want to require more, I'm fine with that.
Well, I think at this particular point in time, at least speaking with one commission member, I think perhaps need to, there's some good ideas that were presented at this meeting this evening. I think that it would be beneficial to put a little bit more thought into that as far as how we, you know, how we want to handle that. So from my perspective, I would certainly be in favor of, you know, continuing this to our, to our next meeting if other commission members feel that way. But again, this is a, it is a public hearing. So if any members of the public at this point in time would like to comment on it, okay, he rises.
Just want to keep, you know, things going here. Don Crouch, economic development specialist. Our office definitely in support of these changes. I think it is important, you know, Kevin mentioned the incentive housing zone. We really don't get a lot of calls from that area. But there are areas, especially in this, in this area where the map changes, where there's already housing. It makes sense. It's not too far from the train station. So just reiterate our support for the changes.
Good. No, I appreciate that. You know, again, I think it's certainly a good idea to expand the, you know, to expand this, the overlay district. It comes down to, in some areas, how we want to make certain adjustments. Again, there were some suggestions mentioned this evening, and I think that's something that commission members want to give some consideration to, you know, prior to our next meeting. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue this application to our January meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for application 904-24, text and map amendment, planning and zoning, section 4.7, downtown apartment DA district.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. All right. Brings us to our next item. It's a site plan, Choate Rosemary Hall, change of an approved detention basin. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation. And, Mr. Allenson, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The additional correspondence that we received was memorandum from Department of Engineering, the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated November 22nd, 2024. Actually, it'd be everything. It's everything?
Yeah, it's everything.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, no.
Sorry.
I'm out of order. I'll go through the back, and then I'll go back to the front.
Okay, you can take this.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. A document entitled "Four Concerns to Be Addressed From Philip Euker to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission", date of receipt December 5th, 2024. Memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated December 9th, 2024. Apologies. Back to the front. Here we go. Correspondence from Dennis Sanaviva to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated October 16th, 2024. A drainage memorandum from technical memorandum, Darren Overton, principal civil engineer, to Choate Rosemary Hall. Multi-page document, date of revision, October 25th, 2024. Storm water management maintenance plan, date of revision 6/4, 2024. Memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated November 7th, 2024. Email correspondence from Allison Kapachinsky to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated 10/31/24. And then the site plan. Apologies. Trying to find the date on it. The last submission date, 4/5/24. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. If the applicant would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Durbin from Choate Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street in Wallingford. To my left is Darren Overton, who's a professional engineer who has worked with us on the Car Hall project, the admission building project. We are here before you at your request due to our request to revise our storm detention basin from above-ground to below-ground. The change, it will be located in the same location as the original plans. It will have the same storm water volume in the, in this revision, and it will function in the same capacity. So we are here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Commission members with any questions for the applicant? Mr. Puccini, questions, comments?
I guess if they can, if the engineer maybe could explain the changes to the commission. I think that was why it was put on an agenda, just the technical differences.
Good evening. For the record, Darren Overton from SLR Consulting, professional engineer, State of Connecticut, and was, as Patrick had mentioned, involved in the design of Car Hall, including the storm water management. We were asked to, the original application came before you, was an above-ground basin. We had designed it, the primary purposes of it were provide storage for detention and then allow for natural infiltration. We had done some permeability testing that showed the soils are relatively permeable. While we did not include the infiltration in the design, we wanted to promote the natural infiltration. And that was part of the review that we went through with the wetlands commission. They encouraged that. So we promoted that as part of the design. The school came back to us and asked to change to an underground basin. So we simply designed an underground type of basin with chambers that would have the same storage. The underground basin has the, serves for the same main objectives of the above-ground basin in that it provides storage for detention, to have zero increase in peak rates of runoff, and then also allows for the same natural infiltration that we had proposed with the above-ground basin. We had sent information over to the town engineer who has reviewed this, and I believe she seemed to, came to the same conclusion as I'm presenting now, that it does serve the same function as the above-ground basin.
Sure. And, Mr. Puccini, also, I know we have a, just a memo we received this evening from our, from wetlands, from our environmental planner. Is that correct?
Yes, it was a response and clarification of her memo dated November 7th.
And the conclusion off of that was?
Reading the letter, the IWWC.
You don't need to read it. Just, I think she had the last, you know, last sentence or so, last paragraph. I think she had a final conclusion. Is that not correct?
Yes, she just said they have no issue with the proposed change and that the permittee will need to provide her office with a copy of the PCC's final approved changes for inclusion in the IWWC file.
Okay. And that's from her most recent memo that we received this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Commission members, again, coming back, any questions? This is a, it's not a public hearing, but we do give the public opportunity to comment on any applications. Any members of the public like to come forward with comments, please come forward and name an address.
Good evening. Phil Euker, 29 Curtis Avenue. I guess just in brief, I had submitted four concerns that I had that I was hoping would be addressed. I haven't heard any discussion or comments or answers with regard to any of them. So I would appreciate if I could get any feedback on those.
Sure. Mr. Puccini, I asked you to, I guess, contact our environmental planner for, you know, responses for, I assume you shared Mr. Euker's memo with her and?
No, she just got it done at 5:00, and I was out of the office. So this is the only response that was left for me. So he can take a look at this if he would like.
Have you folks had an opportunity to look at that? Mr. Puccini?
No, I have not.
No, it was just, she just finished it at probably 5:00 PM, so. Oh, did you want me to give them Mr. Euker's comments?
This is from the environmental planner.
Excuse me. No, Mr. Euker's memo. I mean, he has some questions on that, and I'm not sure if he's in a position, quite frankly, to address all those questions because they're more directed at the, I think, at the town, either the town planner or environmental planner.
I'll let Darren read about percolation. On the process, all I have is an email from the environmental planner that I think came to Mr. Puccini that talked about why the wetlands, yeah, from September 10th, that affirmed that IWWC didn't need to look at it because it's not a regulated activity. And there's no change in function, volume, or location to the basin.
Other issues in that letter?
So on the bleachers, on that piece, the, it's always been the intent, and the bleachers will be put back to where they were when the football field goes back?
Was that on, Mr. Puccini, was that on the initial plans?
Yes.
So the bleachers were on the initial plans. Is that correct?
It said to be removed when I looked at them today. It didn't really say they were being put back. But if they were there to begin with, and they're being put back, then it's really no change, so. But it wasn't really a point of, I think that was more directed towards the environmental planner, though, in her memo. Because I think it was, I think it was pointed out that it wasn't reviewed, and it would be extra impervious or something. But she had said that it was included, so that's what her memo concluded.
Okay. All right. Again, I think we're quite candid. I think we're putting you, or I'm putting you in a very unfair position, and I apologize for that. I'm thinking, I'm asking you probably to answer some questions that, you know, were more directed at, you know, at either our town planner or our environmental planner. So again, I apologize for putting you on the spot. So, commission members, you've seen the, I guess, the comments. It came from our town planner. You've seen some of the questions from Mr. Euker. Leave it up to the commission how they'd like to proceed on this. Okay. So with that, I guess I would entertain a, entertain a motion on the, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 222-24, Choate Rosemary Hall, change to an approved detention basin. Site plan revision requests to change an approved above-ground detention basin to a below-ground detention basin on plans entitled Car Hall Admissions Building revised to May 7th, 2024, with the following conditions. One, comments from the town engineer, Allison Kapachinsky, dated 10/31/24 and 11/22/2024. And two, comments from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, dated 11/7/2024.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. The application's been approved, and again, I once again apologize for someone putting you folks on the spot.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Moving on. Mr. Puccini, if you kind of take the, take the wheel on the rest of this, please.
Administrative approvals, any questions on those?
Anyone have any questions on administrative approvals?
Uh, yeah. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not see the cemetery grass. I don't know if that was an administrative approval.
Yeah, it wasn't technically, and it hasn't been approved yet. So it was kind of a discussion that, it could technically be approved in office, so it's not technically an administrative, but we can definitely discuss if necessary.
I did send a response. I think I may have copied everybody on it.
No, I did see that, yeah.
But, yeah. The cemetery should be able to grow grass, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I also sent in a response to, you know, as far as having the artificial turf. My, one of my concerns with that is I know Mr. Devaney's a big Notre Dame fan, and I could just see a big ND, you know, on the artificial grass. I think Mr., you know, Cohen, you know, had some interesting points as far as the cemetery and why they can't grow grass. I guess one of my suggestions was, if that's a real problem, you know, the garden club has a very nice.
club has a very nice, you know, I don't know, call it a planter, or whatever you want, on, you know, Pond Hill, the intersection of Pond Hill and in South Main Street, you know, in that planting area, and I, you know, it's somewhat of a natural landscape and all of that, that's maybe a little bit of what you may find in some of the more drier, you know, climates in the United States. But if, for some reason, grass is a real problem, I think there's other options that can, you could do a more natural landscaping, you know, there, whether it's with, I don't know, some decorative rocks with plants thrown in there, or somehow. But as far as the artificial turf, I just, I just don't think that's something that we would, we'd want to encourage, but I'd, I'd leave it up to other commission members for what their thoughts may be.
Yeah, if I could just follow up on that, actually, because I think part of the issue with this was, you know, the question, what is grass? And, you know, grass is natural grass, in my opinion, not, not artificial turf. So, you know, I guess if there's other regulations that are a little ambiguous, grass is grass. But that's, thank you.
I, I think it's hard for someone to, at least in my mind, to argue the artificial turf, or whatever is, because it's not even called grass, it's astroturf or something else like, we're getting to be ridiculous. But I guess at some point in time, we, we have a request from the, I guess, the cemetery as far as what we'd like, what they'd like to do, and at some point in time, we need to come to a kind of an answer on that for them. I would generally think the, certainly an option isn't artificial grass, astroturf, whatever the heck you want to call it. What would we like to do, gentlemen? Yeah, I think the, I guess, I think the, the response here would be, you know, no astroturf. And if they have some other options that they want to provide, perhaps they can come back to the commission, you know, for that to be considered. But at this point in time, you know, their, their idea of having astroturf, whether it has a big N D on it or not, you know, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna fly.
All right.
So with that, if there's any other items like to come before the commission, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission dated November, December ninth, twenty twenty four. Happy holidays, everyone.
Yes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.